Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I apologize for being a little bit late. I just came out of one meeting in the back room for our State of the City address. And again, I apologize. I'd like to call the meeting to order Monday, October 18th. It is now 5:44 in the afternoon. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Berger?
Here.
Councilwoman Mabo?
Yes.
Councilman Malzahnado? Councilman Shelley?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wallman? Mayor Bateman?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item three, additions, deletions, and deferrals. I would like to delete one item. Councilman Vice Mayor Wallman will not be here tonight. She's asked me to pull the discussion or actions on customer service workshop. That's item B. Unfortunately, her mother's just got out of the hospital and she is home caring for her now. I'd also like to offer to the council to add item A, Charter School Brief Discussion. Motion?
I'll move it.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, at this time, let's move forward with the Charter School discussion before we even get into any part of the committee at all. Let these people be heard, and let us interject, and please state your name and address for the record. Charter School would like to open this up, and then we'll open to the public. This is a public workshop. This is for public input. This will be about the fifth, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, the fifth public workshop that we've had. The fifth. From Phase One into Phase Two, this will be our fifth workshop public meeting. It is open to the public. Address, name and address, please, sir.
John Hage, CEO of Charter Schools USA, 6245 North Federal Highway, Fort Lauderdale, Florida.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Briefly, I just wanted to provide since the last council meeting where there was an update on the Phase One. I won't go back through all of that, but I'd like to, just if you don't mind, Mayor, go right to Phase Two. Obviously, since the workshop that we had with the council, which I thought went very well, and the consensus among the different council members there was all taken into consideration by Charter Schools USA. And we took all of those points that were given to us and provided back to your city attorney a contract form which outlines basic terms as discussed with the city. Let me just, if you don't mind, go through a little bit of that presentation which has been provided to all the council members. One is the idea is as it has been and has been discussed in one form or another for the last five years with this city. And that is to create a new, high-quality, safe learning environment to replicate the proven educational success of what we already have at the Keys Gate Charter School. To construct a new state-of-the-art high school for up to 1,800 students and their families with approximately $30 million of private funding. To provide as provided, to allow as provided under state statute, military priority under the admissions, including sibling priorities and other priorities that are allowed under the statute. To provide as, to the degree allowable by the law, the preference for Homestead residents. And that would continue with an agreement to put forth at the legislative level this year, a actual fix to that so that the land lease that we're discussing would allow for your residents to actually get a residential preference. So that is going to be a bill that we are working with our lobbyists already on to put forward to the legislature. To revitalize existing park complex into a true source of pride for the city of Homestead that has been sitting empty and vacant for the last 20-plus years. To provide somewhere in the range of 350 new construction jobs with over $25 million of direct benefit to the city of Homestead. With another 175 permanent, high-paying education jobs with the majority living in Homestead according to our current data, which shows about 75% of our teachers actually living within the Homestead city limits. The property and facility with the city, all the property in Phase Two to be maintained by the school, public access to be given to the facility and the fields where the traffic flow internal to the park and off Kingman Road, and development on an existing, non-tax generating property. The basics of the deal are as outlined. 6.65 acres of land would be leased to Red Apple Development for a ground lease of approximately $90,000 per year for 35 years. This would total $3.15 million. On present land value, somewhere in the range of $750,000 to $1 million. We did look at comparables out in the marketplace. There's not a lot to go off of. Obviously, land values are changing and fluctuating, mostly going down, but that's our best estimate. That's being a bit generous, actually. And another 7.9 acres adjacent parking use through non-exclusive license with the city to be jointly used with the city. The school would be to accommodate approximately 1,800 students at capacity, and all development and construction costs would be at the less-lease expense. 24 months from the lease commencement to have the school open is the agreement as provided. And then to maintain current commitment to utilize local subcontractors and labor, which actually worked very well, Mayor, in Phase One. Due to the partnerships that we had on the ground here in the city, and it worked very well. The proposal would be that Red Apple would own the improvement, but give the city the option to purchase at the conclusion of the lease and to purchase at a reduced value of 85% of appraised value. Thus providing a discount of somewhere in the range of $3 to $5 million of additional discount to the city on top of the $3 million of lease that the city would be provided. Phase Three would be potential options for other land around, including the rest of the parkland, to have that first right of refusal, which obviously is not connected to Phase Two, but to have that opportunity. And then to have the school have the long-term right to use the recreation and ball fields for the purpose of the students, the high school students. This is a drawing of the facility. Obviously, it'll go through the requirements of the city to ultimately meet the requirements that you maintain. And this is a bit of a schematic which also will have to go through the same requirements for approval. The presentation briefly outlines and answers most of the issues, but I wanted to address a few others if I might, Mayor. One is that traffic has been a part of the consideration for the last five years that a Charter School's been discussed in or around this area. There's been multiple traffic studies. We've conducted those, including changing traffic engineers based on the requirements of the city. And the impact and the requirements of those traffic studies are being not only considered in this plan, but we believe this plan meets and exceeds those requirements. Pulling all of the traffic off of the main arteries onto the site. And that's why the site is in fact so unique, because you're actually using 90 acres of land, not just 10 or 15 acres of land, which allows for that traffic mitigation to take place. Secondly, that there's been a large amount of public input on this process over the last five years. In the last year alone, we've met with neighborhood groups, with associations, with parents, with media, with council members on multiple times. We've come to workshops multiple times, and we have been integral and a part of this process in an open and fashion. These kind of processes obviously can be very convoluted, but we believe we've made a very good faith effort to make sure that the process has been as much public input as possible. And we continue to stand ready for any additional public input as we move forward. The fees, I read recently an article made by, written by one of your residents, I believe he's here tonight, where there was some facts, some numbers put out there as if they were factual. And I'd like to address them directly on the stand tonight in the public. First of all, the idea of this project creating anything close to $500 million is quite frankly laughable. The project is funded on a per-student basis of approximately $6,200 to $6,500 per student. That's the amount of money that the state of Florida provides for Charter School students of these grade levels. The money is public money, and it goes to a non-for-profit board of directors, the Renaissance Foundation, which oversees the Keys Gate Charter School. Which includes board members of, in the community, including a school governing council made up of community members. The money then is used in the following ways. The biggest chunk of that money, somewhere around 50% of all the dollars that come in for a Charter School are paid for teacher salaries and staff and their benefits. The second piece is the facility. Typically, that facility cost can range anywhere between 10 to 20% of the total budget per student. The second, the third piece is the pieces of all the cost for running the school. The FFNE, your whiteboards, your desks, your operating expenses, your water, your sewer, your electric, all the ongoing expenses in the school. And then your fourth piece is the management fee paid to Charter Schools USA for operating the school, managing the school. And the way that works is we have a contract. It's a public contract. It's been provided to the school district and every Charter School that we operate. And that contract reflects the negotiated terms between us and the non-for-profit board, and also is a part of our annual audits which go to the state of Florida, as well as to the school district and to the non-for-profit board. In that contract, we, under the bonds that we just floated, to give you a perfect example, the Charter School fees that were paid to Charter Schools USA during, for the operation of the new Phase One that was just built, are stated to be $465,000 per year. Okay? And that $465,000 then comes out of the student tuition and paid Charter Schools USA for operating the school. From that $465,000, the majority, somewhere in the range of 85 to 90% of those dollars are spent on actual costs. So we do the payroll systems, we do the HR, we do the technology, we handle the curriculum, we handle all of the operating systems you might see in a typical school district. That's the role we play. So those overhead costs are then paid for out of that fee, and what's left over from that fee is in fact a return on investment, i.e. profit, if in fact the school fully enrolls. And the way it works is that that fee is paid last. So if the school is less than fully enrolled, the incentive is on Charter Schools USA to do a great job, to have an A-plus school, which is the number one reason schools fully enroll. And then we get paid our fee, and we get paid our costs, and ultimately we can make a small but reasonable return. And that process is exactly how these schools work and every other school that we operate works. Those numbers are fully publicly audited, and I'd be prepared tonight to provide those in any way, shape, or form to your satisfaction to show you the board's oversight that we have on those numbers so that you'll be in fact satisfied with those in a factual way to ensure that the public has the facts versus not the facts. I'd also like to point out that the school enrolls students from every city district in your city. In fact, at the last council, at workshop, we provided this oversight, this slide. What we did is we plotted every student who lived and every student that went to the Keys Gate Charter School and where they actually live. This represents that slide, those demographics, those, that data point. And so you can see that the student population is in fact, and by the way, this is random. So there's no ability on our part to say students from one area can come and another can't. It's an open lottery system except for the preferences that you're allowed to have. And there are certain preferences that I've mentioned earlier in the law. So I just wanted to point that out, that it does impact every single district in your city. And obviously, at this point, we have somewhere in the range of 1,800 students that this impacts, of which 85% of the students attending this school, 85% actually reside in the city of Homestead. And those are taxpayers in the city. And with that, I just wanted to point out a couple of the facts. I know there'll be plenty others and questions, and so I'm ready to prepare to answer all those questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Questions from council? Jonathan, I got one.
Yes, sir.
Tell me, the citizens that are here tonight, are they city of Homestead citizens?
I think they are. In fact, if maybe all those-
Raise your hands.
That are residents of Homestead, if you would raise your hands.
Okay. All right. I guess in the workshops, we haven't really ever talked about how time-sensitive the project is. What, and you have your construction operator with you today, tell me, what would be the drop-dead date if we don't have an agreement by that there would really be no reason to build it for the next year, fall year coming?
Well, I'm not the construction expert, but I will let Scott-
Where do we, that's one of the reasons why I keep trying to bring it, you know, bring this to the tables, that I know there's got to be a cutoff time.
My name's Scott Woodry. I'm with Red Apple Development that you saw on the screen.
Address.
6245 North Federal Highway, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, 33308. I can work backwards. I can tell you that I have already started the civil engineering design and the architectural design documents. Because if I don't have those ready by mid-November to submit for permit, I will not have a permit in time to get the facility done by August. So I really need to be getting a permit out of the city at the first of the year and breaking ground, or it's not going to happen. And in order to ensure that happens, I've had to already start spending money and start the construction document design and the civil engineering and whatnot. In fact, I've already sent to Mr. Perinos a conceptual, final site plan layout from our civil engineer, adding the additional entrances and exits on Palm Drive that the commission had asked for at a previous workshop. So he's already got that information to give me comments on.
Okay, thank you. That was important to me. Questions, John?
Well, I guess I would just start with saying, you know, I've been fully supportive of this school since the beginning. I mean, we always haven't seen eye to eye-
Yes, sir.
-on what we think is the best deal for everybody. You're a shrewd businessman, that's why you are where you are. I'm trying to look out for not just the citizens that are going to attend, but everybody in the city.
Yes, sir.
And that's why I have some of the questions, you know, that I have asked in the past. You covered some of the things, as your representative called me today, and I asked, you know, some financial questions and things like that. And that is something that I would like to sit down and look at in a little more depth.
Be happy to provide that.
One thing that you brought up that I'm not sure of, and maybe you can clear up, and maybe our city attorney, is the right of refusal on the remaining part. Because we do have other people that are interested in it now, ready to come forward and do stuff. So what exactly, not being an attorney and having read this 37-page document that's given to me as well as I could and kept up with the leasing, the lease or the back and forth, the way they go. What is, can you explain that to me a little bit better? And I guess explain to me why you need that first right of refusal also, so I understand what it is to you. I know you're looking for Phase Three, and you brought up a possible college campus at one time and things like that. So I need to know the importance, I guess, of that from you guys, and what is the legal on that if we, you know?
The proposals that they've made, let me just sort of back up for a second to just procedurally tell you where we are. At the last meeting, we had a conversation about this, and you directed us to prepare a lease absent the economic terms and send it to them so that they could make a proposal to us regarding the economic terms or whatever else they wanted to change in the deal, in the transaction. I believe it was the day after that meeting, I may be off by a day, we sent them a lease that was sort of the complete legal stuff to protect the city. And asked them then to go and make a monetary and whatever other changes they wanted to the lease that we drafted.
Numerous.
Correct. And so that's the red line, and the red line lease that we forwarded to you, that it's in your agenda package, is what their proposal is to us. And what we tried to do in the memo that we sent you, and I've discussed this with most of you, there were seven sort of major points that we thought, that we needed direction on from you that were proposed by them. And one of those items was this right of first refusal. And what they've included in their proposal back to us is a right of first refusal on the high school parcel, which is the parcel where the high school rebuilt. The dormitory parcel, which is the former baseball dormitories. The dormitory fields, which are the fields that are attached to the dormitories-
They've improved.
And the parking parcel, which is the one that's attached to the high school for parking for the high school. Is that right, John, on the parking parcel?
E, yeah.
Jonathan Curry, that's me, John, that's correct, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So that's, they've asked for a right of first refusal on those items, not on the baseball stadium or the other parts, just it's limited to those items?
I just wanted to make sure that I was reading everything clear.
Well, I'm actually not sure. Maybe they can clarify because the, is it just meant to be those? No, it's meant to be the baseball parcel, I realized tonight, even though they didn't include that specifically. They mean that to include the entire piece.
What they sent back to us was what I told you, but I guess it's been clarified this evening, so you do want a right of first refusal on the baseball stadium?
My direction on that was really from the workshop where you had asked us to separate the rest of the stadium from the Phase Two. Does that mean? But that's, but what we were looking at there is that trying to anticipate the next step is difficult. And we had this discussion at the workshop. We believe, but we don't know, that the Phase Two will impact obviously additional development in the area by helping homes being sold, by creating more jobs, but also by attracting potentially other educational institutions. As this location becomes known, and already is known, as an educational center and an investment by the city, it is likely that additional educational benefits and opportunities would come to bear. Not unlike a higher education institution where two-year dual enrollment could take place. But we don't know if that'll happen. We just, at the same time, want to have the ability since we will then have the investment and the thousands of kids and the parents to ensure that the continual educational benefits take part. Now, that doesn't mean that there wouldn't be, that if, let's say, a third party came in and wanted to negotiate the rest of the land for a price that we didn't want to match, then we would lose that right. And you would in fact go ahead. All we're saying is we want an equal shot at that because you've now made an affirmative step to put education there, and that educational value needs to be preserved.
Well, I think Ed cleared it up, because I thought that you guys wanted the rights to refuse everything, and I didn't read that the other day when I was reading what was given to me. So that does clear that up, and that was one of my questions, you know, what exactly were you wanting the rights to refusal of? Because the way I understood it, you guys did want everything, but when I read that, when I read the document the other day, I didn't see that in there.
Yes, sir. I think the concept is real, we try to make it a very simple proposal. That is, we're going to lease from the city at above-market value, the land, in return for the opportunity to invest a large sum of money for the educational benefit of the city's long-term benefit. And then to ensure that that benefit is in fact long-term to the city, we want to make sure that something doesn't come in that's contrary to the benefit of those kids. Not all uses would be conducive, quite frankly, to a school. And so the whole idea is to protect and to have that option, which we think is, you know, a fair opportunity to say yes or no. And that's all we're asking.
Mayor, a few more questions?
Please.
I didn't see anything, and maybe once again I overlooked it or just didn't understand the legal jargon. And I guess this would go to John up there. Is there anything in there to protect the city that say in 15 or 20 years, something happens where this school, or 10 years, or 30 years, whatever the number would be, I'm just throwing numbers out there, where they closed and the city would then be liable for this building on this land with no use for it essentially? Is there any protection in there where they're-
The only protection would be that you could take the property back at that point.
And then we'd be liable for the building and whatever?
Well, the way that it's drafted now, no, they would somehow keep that building. I'm not sure how that would work, but the way it was drafted originally and the way the dormitory school lease works is that if they do stop operating the school, you could terminate the lease and take the property back and then find a new tenant or do something else with the property.
That's how it was originally, now it's been stricken and changed? They did? Okay. And evidently, I didn't get that draft.
The one that we had sent back-
Okay.
Had that.
It did.
The one that we had sent to Charter Schools USA-
Maybe I'm still reading the wrong one.
Said that if they were in default on the lease, then we would be able to terminate the lease, and all of it belonged to the city, and then we could go get another operator. What they've sent back to us is, it's not really clear what happens to the property on termination of the lease. What they've proposed is that determination of the lease, that we have the ability to buy the building from them for a percentage of appraised value.
80%.
But it doesn't specify what happens if we don't buy it. So that question is sort of left open.
The intent, and I'll let the lawyers work through the detail, but just to put it on the record, because I'd like this straight, you know, I think it should be done in the public, is that the city has no liability during this process. That's the intent. The intent is to ensure that the process is on the private side to finance, to operate, and to manage. Okay? The other intent is to ensure that if there ever is a problem on the private side, that the city's always protected because the city has the ability to foreclose and has a large amount of assets, and they're benefit to do so if we don't pay. So those are at least two of the intents. The third intent that I think in general stands is that the idea is that this is a public good that's being created here. And even though there's a public-private partnership that's involved in creating that public good, the idea is to benefit the public at the maximum while reducing the liability to the minimum. Which means putting the liability on the private side and putting the benefit of not financing the school on the public sector and not costing the public sector to maintain the school.
If I could ask, what did you anticipate would happen if you were in default on the lease?
I think you would be able to foreclose.
Okay, but what the language that you sent back to us says is that the property comes back to us, but the language and the improvements on the property was deleted. So we really didn't know what-
Yeah, and we shot back language for you to work through. We've got to work through some of that, Richard. But the key here is that since you never, since the city never loses ownership of the property, you don't somehow waive or forestall your ability to foreclose or exercise your rights in order to collect that rent and to ensure that the property, one, is insured to your requirement and is maintained to your requirement. Those, if you look at the lease, we didn't impact those maintenance or insurance issues or upkeep of the actual property itself.
So what is it that you would intend if there's a default on the lease with respect to the building? I guess that's what I'm asking.
The intent, if there's a, if there is a default on the lease, on the underlying ground lease, that the city would be able to take control both of the land and the facility.
Okay. All right. Well, we need to redraft that to make that clear.
Okay. Hang on, I got one.
Ed, buzz, will we?
And then one more question or concern of mine is, at the end of the lease, were to buy this back at, I believe it was 80% or 85% of the determined value at that time. I would like to see that, and this is for everybody to think about, one of my ideas is to see that either as an option for the city to do, because I know that as I sit up here now, I get a lot of things that were done 20, 10, 15 years ago that don't make any sense for the city to do now. And in 35 years, it may not make sense for the city to buy that, buy that building. Or the building may be through years and years of, you know, wear and tear that 1,800 kids can do to a building. I see what one kid does at home, mine, you know, who knows what 1,800 kids are going to do on an annual basis over there. So I would like to see possibly the language where it's either a, the city remains with the option or the Charter Schools returns the land in its original form back to the city. Give that, give that option to the council at that time, or whatever form of government they may have in 35 years.
The intent, and I'm not sure again the language, but the intent, and this would be, I guess, direction for the attorneys to give you that language back, is for the option to be at the city's option. And if you say no to the option, then there's no obligation.
And what would happen? We'd take it back?
We would have to continue to operate the school.
But you have no lease, no lease.
Well, at that point, we're going to have to negotiate a new one. You're going to, you know, exact probably a whole new price. I'm hoping 35 years from now, I'm probably not the one sitting in front of me negotiating that.
So your proposal is that the city can buy it?
Yes, sir.
And if I'm not being facetious.
I understand.
And if the city decides not to buy it, then you have a lease that we're forced to negotiate a lease with you for you to continue operating it?
Or you could find, in fact, another leaseholder, of course.
Except you own the building.
Well, the point is is that you own the dirt. And what we're only proposing is is that we continue to pay you for the dirt every year until for 35 years. If you would like something to go beyond that, then, you know, I'm open to a suggestion beyond that, but it's 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 something I thought was a reasonable. The debt service that we would finance in this is approximately 35 years. So that's why the lease is set up for 35 years. I don't want to. Please help me understand because I don't.
I'm not, I just, there's, it's I don't, it's not something that's that is plausible or acceptable to the city to say that we have the option of buying it, and if we don't buy it, then we're forced to negotiate a lease with you again. I mean, that's not that's not commercial.
What would be a preferred model then?
Yeah. And and it's really changed from the original, from phase one. If you remember, phase one, it was the building becomes ours in 35 years if we chose to keep it. Actually, there was a conversation, John, that that 35 years, maybe there may be expense greater than we want to spend to not demolish it and haul it away, you know, whatever. I mean, I don't know, today's construction, you know, being somewhat involved in construction, I can tell you, but the way we build today, the building will exceed 75 years. I mean, in in today's construction term, you know, the way we build. So I just think they need to go back to our original agreement on that part. I'm with John. I I don't see that doesn't that's not real clear to me there.
So what you're asking for is that the lease continue past 35 years?
No, no, I'm asking, saying at the end of 35 years, whoever's here, God bless them, and running this, sitting in this chair and the rest of these chairs, they they either negotiate a new lease with you or they say, sorry, we're going to take green apple instead of red apple, and you move on. You've had your 35 years.
But I own the building at that point, so what are you saying?
Well, the original.
What you originally offered us.
The original transaction was that you were going to lease the you were going to lease the land for 35 years.
And give us the.
And then there was quite a to-do made that this was going to be a city asset. And so and I.
That was the original agreement.
Most commercial leases.
All right, I understand. You're actually negotiating that you want me to pay you for the land for 35 years and you want me to pay for the building and then give it back?
Most most commercial leases.
That's a great. But but think about it, you're paying us.
Would you do that deal?
You're on my team. You're paying us for 35 years, but originally you were going to carry the cost of that stadium for 35 years, and I don't know what you you'd have spent 250,000 to 300,000. Now, the offer from as well as last meeting was, you know, 75 to 100,000. I think you came to that. But look, we we can add and subtract up here. I mean, we.
No, I understand.
Obviously, you've lost a big debt if we carved that stadium out.
Well, the the okay, so in phase one, we agreed to a process that was, I think, fair for both sides, and that was that the land lease is negligible dollar a year. In return, we give you the building back improved, which cost us four and a half million dollars. And phase two, you've asked for a land lease rather than a dollar a year. And what we've said is that, okay, if we're going to start paying for the land at a fair market or even greater than fair market value, which we believe 3.1 million dollars is more than fair market value, that that, in fact, that the private side of this is that we're going to have to finance the construction of the school on our balance sheet, not the city's balance sheet. And then we said that that ownership could be purchased back by the city at a discount as an additional value, which we estimated between three and five million dollars as well on future value of a building, because it's 15% off 100% value. So that the total value to the city would be somewhere in the range of six to eight million dollars of value. And that that proposal, I think, represents a fair value of both sides. And 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 I think that does that even if even though the entire long-term benefit is obviously to the city for having a very new school there at no cost to the city and creating the jobs and everything else it's doing. To suggest that at the end of building this, where we took the risk, right, and we took the expense and we and we put in all the investment and to use public dollars that go to the benefit of the public school students and then say that that now goes all back to the city and I think is 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 not a fair deal by any by any stretch of the imagination, quite frankly, because it creates a situation where the the benefit and the cost aren't aligned. And right now, I think the proposal represents that from the last discussion that we had. One other opportunity might be to extend the lease to a longer term. And that might be an option, is that instead of agreeing to a 35-year lease with the city, we could agree to a longer-term lease, perhaps as long as 50 years.
Mayor.
Yes.
One more point I'd like to make. I would like, you offered up $90,000 a year is what it comes out to. Seventy-five dollars, $7,500 a month minus $4.80 some cents per student. I would like to see that that amount guaranteed at $90,000 and in five years, we're in we're in a depressed market, so the land is 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 cheap right now.
Reevaluated.
And if he does something like $90,000 for the first couple, three years or something, and then I think it needs to be revisited in in my eyes and not revisited because who knows who's going to be sitting here, and I don't want to put that burden on them. But I think it needs to step up to some more money. We give him three, four, five years or whatever the term is that we come up with to get going, have a little bit of time to grow and feel the pain, but I and then I think that that lease needs to step up. I mean, everywhere I've ever been in my life, the first year, you've paid one thing, the second year, you've paid another, the third, and and it increases. And then if I did the numbers on what he gave me tonight, they're grossing $11.1 million a year, approximately, that $390.6 million over a 35-year lease. So I would hope that somewhere in.
I'm sorry, council member, the 390?
Well, you gave me if you gave me, I took $200 per student and you used it a little bit different, times 1,800, and that came out to $11.1 million a year.
Right.
Times 35 years comes out to $390 million gross over a 35-year lease.
That's the school's revenue.
Gross. And I understand the gross, and you take out the 50% for the salaries, and and that fluctuates plus or minus a little bit as as things go on and seniority kicks in, I understand, and 10 to 20 and all that. But I would hope that somewhere down the road that the the city can see more than $90,000 and, you know, is and that's at today's figures. If if in four or five years, the state or whoever's giving out $7,200 a student, you know, who knows where the money will ever come from, and, you know, when you look at budgets today, but, you know, that's using today's figures, and I understand that. But I would also like to see the the lease stepped up a little bit in, say, a four or five-year term.
If I might just offer this, because I sometimes I feel like the bread in the middle of the pond and all the ducks are kicking at it a little here. There's a I think there's, I just want to make sure that the facts are very, very clear because sometimes there's a little confusion on the funding side. The per student reimbursement from the state is set by the state, obviously. That amount might fluctuate. In the last couple of years, it actually was flat, and two years ago, it went down by 4% because the state revenue went down.
We have to use today's numbers, though.
Yes, sir. And what we've worked off of here is a process where there is a limited amount of money that the school receives. And every dollar that doesn't go to the school is $1 less that goes to something in the school, to teacher salaries, to technology in the school. It's unfair to look at it as if it's Charter School USA's money. The way to look at it is that Charter School USA makes a management fee, but that the 90% of that money is in that school paying for those schools' expenses. And even in that management fee, a substantial 85 to 90% of that money is paying for the overhead costs of running that school, for hiring those teachers. We have curriculum teams, we do the technology, we handle all those. And I have 65 people in the headquarters that's supporting those people, and I pay them salaries. So what really is at question is, after all that said and done, there's something that floats at the bottom, assuming I run a great school and do a good job and it's filled up. The amount of lease that we've set aside in this discussion, which came in the workshop between 75,000 and 100,000, represented something that we went back and we looked at, we just did, we're right now completing $70 million worth of bonds. And those bonds were publicly financed through the state of Florida. Okay? The governor's office actually signed off on those financings. And when we went through that, that had to meet IRS code requirements for how much the costs of everything were. I mean, in fact, our attorney can verify tonight that we've been through every single dollar on that. This building will be financed the same way. So I I don't mean to not be willing to negotiate. I am. But the truth of the matter is, is even the number that we're discussing tonight, the $90,000 per year, even if you had an incremental increase like you're suggesting, has to be fair market value that represents the sort of known understanding that the attorney general in the state of Florida expects from a public-financed charter school. And this school, I can tell you from the numbers we've done, we do this all the time for schools across the state, these numbers represent those things right now. Now, you can create something where the cost of living or the increase in reimbursement might go up. And I think that is, in fact, maybe a way to get to what you're saying. And I and that would mean that if, let's say, in year five, reimbursements from the state started to go up at 3% or 4%, then there would be, in fact, some steps relatively the same to the rent increase for the city. And I think that that would be, that's an astute point, and, you know, I think, you know, if that's the consensus of the council to to, we want to make this happen.
I understand that, but I also, you know, I want to make sure that, like, that I'm trying to do the best deal for the city.
Yes, sir.
You know, I'm all for the school. I voted yes for it for for phase one and and, you know, would love to see a school over there. One day, my son's going to need a high school to go to, and perhaps I'll still be here and he'll attend that one. But I want to make sure, you know, and and I see a lot of open ends or what I perceive to be open ends still in this contract that was sent to me, that I want to clarify because as I sit here, we just went through a big open-ended one with the J. Luc and Acoos. And I don't want to pass things like that on to future people and have them have to deal with things and try to figure out what we were thinking or what avenue we were trying to take a lease or 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 an agreement or whatever now. So I would like to try to make sure that there's no open ends and that the best deal is cut.
I understand, and we agree, we need a closed deal. And we're 95% there based off of the current terms. There's obviously tweaks that you need to give direction to tonight. If there's agreement between us in general tonight, we have our both of our attorneys here, they can get this thing done. We could have an exciting opportunity in front of us to close it up. I'm not opposed to the idea of having some incremental rent increase in the future tied to a to a COLA.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to follow the outline of the memo that the attorney sent to us regarding the lease to state what I agree with and what I have a disagreement with. In regards to the change of name, I don't have a problem with that. Regarding the rent, I did express to your representatives that I did not want to tie the business aspect of the charter schools to the rent that the city would be receiving. So I would like that language. I mean, I won't, I wouldn't support a prorated amount of rent. I just want the first part to remain and part B to go away. The city will be receiving $7,500 a month regardless of what your enrollment looks like.
And and council member, ma'am, yes, we we understand that, and we got that feedback, and we agree to those terms. Yes, ma'am.
I don't have a an opinion on number three, which is the ownership of the building, because the attorneys have put in here that we have not decided what that 85% appraised value looks like. We need some more details as far as construction cost, depreciated tax value for the improvement. Once those details are filled in, I think I can look at a real life scenario of what maybe perhaps it would be today worth to kind of compare what kind of restriction we would be putting a council 35 years from now into. And so I agree with the attorney that a little bit more detail needs to be provided to see what that 85% offer would look like for the city. On number four, the right of first refusal, I stand in the same opinion that I had at the last meeting, which meant that I don't want to tie any other property to the lease of the school. And that would mean that if we would enter into an agreement where the baseball stadium would be under the category right for first refusal for Charter Schools USA, that I would not support it. And the reason why I went away from having you guys say that part of the lease would be that you would be in charge of maintenance at the baseball stadium, and I said, well, we want a dollar value, then let's make it part of the rent. And that's why I went in that direction, which is what the mayor was referring to. And again, I want to separate the baseball stadium from any current transactions, including this lease. So I would not be for including that as part of the right of first refusal category. The construction period, it says right here that we had put in there a requirement that you would start construction within 30 days after we've approved everything. And it says right here, the attorney says that you've deleted that 30-day period, but you have not provided an alternate timeframe. And I would like to know why we did away with that 30-day period. If we approve, as the mayor has stated, that we're on a fast-track timeline, why have we done away with that 30-day requirement of starting of commencing construction from the time that we approved this?
Probably because we need a little bit of room to not be in fault of your own lease. So, yeah, we need a permit. So you're trying to control that, not us, so.
What would be a proposed timeframe?
We'd be happy, yeah, we'd be happy to, I guess, ask the city to guarantee us a permit within 30 days. So it's hard for me to promise you something that you control. That's all.
So I'm sorry, Mayor, I have another question. So that's the only part of the process that would extend the 30-day period?
Yeah, we just need.
The city's permit?
We need permits from your city to begin.
If we started, if we actually got the permits in early March, you wouldn't you wouldn't start the construction until the following.
Right. So so like, let's say, beyond our control, the city doesn't give us permits until March for some reason.
Excepted, excepted the way it was drafted was 30 days after received approvals, and that included building permits and all permits, so that's so it covered you for that.
Right.
And this is the circumstance we are concerned with. Richard, assume that it's now March and we get it. Under the original draft, we would then have to be required to begin construction, say, by April. And it doesn't make sense to have construction start in April when there is no way you can finish the school by August. And so remember, unlike like a shopping center or a housing development, the window for a school is definite. Either you're open by August of that year or you have to wait till August of the next year. And so that was the concern with that language.
Well, if I may suggest, I don't want to leave it open-ended. I think that some language can be included to include all those scenarios.
It's it's not open-ended in the fact that the school has to be open in 24 months. So if you go back to what Ed was just talking about, if we spend the next six months laboring the improve the approvals, the entitlements, the permitting, and and we get a permit in March, we don't want to start in April and be done in February of next year and then sit there for six months with no students to put in the building, no revenue to pay the debt or anything else. We would push it back and probably start that building in the fall to be done in the summertime, just in time for school to open, when the revenue starts coming in to pay the debt. But on the back end, you're protected because it says we have to be open in 24 months.
I guess three meetings ago, I believe it was Councilman Burgess, actually, when we were approving the phase one, was to keep in line with guaranteeing a high school within a certain timeframe, that we wanted to see some language in there for a definite timeframe. And I know that was phase one, but I'm just thinking ahead with with this timeframe, with this phase two.
And and I think there is a timeframe in there. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
At 24 months.
There's a cross-default provision, and as the memo reads, it says that draft lease prohibited renaissance, the draft lease that we sent forth to you guys, from using the high school parcel as security for debt relating to other property. And since we own the land and you own the building, you don't have total ownership, neither parties do, why would we open ourselves up to have this property tied to debt or securing debt from other properties?
Can can you repeat it, please?
Sure. The lease that we sent to you had a provision in there that would prohibit renaissance from using the high school parcel as security for debt relating to other property. And so I want to know the reason why the city would be interested in entering it, something that, I mean, we still own the land, so why would we allow renaissance to use the high school parcel for debt relating to other property?
We wouldn't. We wouldn't. The the concept, we were okay with any financing that's done on the actual building itself would be within would would be secured by the building. would be within, would be secured by the building. So, as an example, if we went ahead with a bond deal similar to what we just did for the dormitory, we improved that parcel, you now have it open, it is, the actual facility itself is secured, facility itself is a security piece for, for the bond, assuming it continues to operate as a charter school. The same would be true here. If we financed a bond for the improvement of the high school, the only security for that high school would be the bond. In fact, I'll share with you a specific. If we did the financing the way we anticipate in getting the high school out of the ground, the bonds would not let us use that improvement to securitize anything else. So, it would only be for the debt of the bond money that we would need to build the building itself. Do you follow me?
Yes, so I have through the mayor to the attorneys, as it reads, if we delete that language from the lease and we accept their draft, would that prohibit them from entering into other projects in other cities or in other areas outside of this parcel that we're speaking of, to use that for securing it for other properties? That's what I'm concerned about. I mean, I know what, the example that you're giving is within the property and the, and everything relating to it. What I'm trying to say is that I would not be okay with anything outside of that, and so I want the language to remain.
I understand, and what I'm saying is, I agree with you, and if we financed it through bonds like we did the dorm, the bondholders would certainly agree with you as well.
So, here's the issue. By allowing them to use this property as security for debt relating to other properties, it means that if this charter school is doing great and one of their other projects goes into default, then the lender could have the ability to come in and take over this project and start operating this project, not because of a default on this project, but because of a default on another project. And so, that's the issue.
And that's a risk to the city.
In fact, I'd agree the language that we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to secure, use the improvement as security against other projects. I'm okay with that language.
Okay, that's fine, but we was reading the language that was sent back to us.
I mean, let's simplify it, I'm okay with that language. Because I think we're going to be bound by the, assuming we use the bond finance, we're going to be bound by that anyway.
Two more points, Mayor, if I may. Okay, the insurance part, I see that you're reducing the insurance coverage limit. Is that just to reduce the premium, or is there some reason for that?
We're under, those, the insurance limitations-
It says that you're going from $5 million to $2.
Yeah, the insurance limitations that we provided as feedback back to the city attorney were consistent with what is required under our charter agreement with the school board. And that's, that was the only reason for the pushback on that, so we would have consistency throughout, throughout the, throughout the system. That was the only reason why.
Okay, thank you. And my last point, Mayor, was going back to the details of the sale of the 85% of the appraised value. I'm open to some of the other discussions that have taken place here at the dais, specifically to Councilman John Burgess and what he has stated, some of the other provisions that he would like to be part of that sale, so. Aside from that, I think that we're making progress here and hopefully we'll come to some conclusions real soon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, could I do one quick follow-up on something she asked? I see our risk management is here. Through the chair, could I ask her a question about the insurance?
Yes.
For Priscilla. Going with Councilwoman Lobos' question about $5 million reduced to $2 million, is that, in your eyes, as our risk management person and all that, is that something that the city should be comfortable with? I mean, I know it's kind of a quick question and you haven't studied everything and all that, but just off the top of my head-
If I understood his answer, he said that he, they reworded it that way to be consistent with the requirements by the State of Florida-
The State of Florida sets the-
The school board.
The State of Florida sets the requirements and the school board affirms those requirements.
All right. I think we had originally recommended the $5 million because I had seen that on one of their prior certificates of insurance, but if you do a $2 million per location limit, meaning that you have that specified limit per location, that could probably work too. I don't know, that's just my thoughts on it.
Okay, perhaps you could maybe look at that for us tomorrow, is this is, is going to come back, if you could, and just maybe make sure that would work for the city and make sure the city's okay with that for us.
We'd be happy to work through that and whatever satisfactory, of course.
I saw her sitting here, she hadn't been to a lot of these meetings, so I just thought we'd ask her tonight.
Our intent is to just follow the law, whatever the requirement of the law is.
Yep.
And obviously, the city's sovereign immunity would continue regardless.
Excuse me for being, coming in late, was coming from Miami. Just a quick question. Timeframe-wise, I know that we've come quickly to try to get this worked out for just the basic, the simple idea that we want to open this school for the next school year.
Yes, sir.
How realistic is that at this point today? How realistic is it, so that we don't give a false sense to our parents and those who are hoping to have this, if we could be realistic with that and just put it on the record, so that we know what type of timeframe we're working with, so that we don't feel the need to rush if there's no rush. Nonetheless, we understand the importance of getting this high school completed, and as obviously, I think, the will of this count, well, it would be my hope that we would, you know, move this forward and have this high school built after we work out the details.
Yes, sir. The, there's two critical points that the council needs to be aware of that directly impacts this school and your citizens. One is that Phase One of the school started with ninth grade, which now matriculates to 10th grade next year. And the new building needs to be built to at least house some of those students based on the growth projections that we currently have. If the school is not built at least in part for the 2011 school year, we will have to reduce enrollment across the entire Keys Gate system and put more kids on the waiting list, which you already have well over about 800, 800 students on the waiting list. So, we believe it's critical to at least get a phase, a piece, a portion, half, something like that, done in the next school year, and that's why it's critical to have some decisions in the next week or two, to continue that process. If the decision is not to, if you don't make decisions with us, or the answer's no, then that will kill 2011, and then the school will then need to cap its enrollment for future grades, and it will definitely impact the high school. There's just no way to get around that because there's not enough seats for the next class to come through and to house them. The other part of that is that by 2012, under the contract that we provided, the facilities to be completed. And our intent would be to move forward with an agreement with the city soon, i.e. the next week or two, and to then have that agreement allow us to go forth, get the permits, construct a piece of, a part of Phase Two right now, and then finish it up for Phase, the second part of Phase Two for 2012. And I think that's realistic, it makes sense from the construction schedule. Scott's going to tell me that to come out today and tell anybody that we're going to have a full high school with 1,800 seats ready for 2011 is unrealistic, and I'm not going to make that promise because it's just unrealistic. This is not the renovation of the dormitories that we just went through, which we did in extraordinarily fast time with local support that was done extremely well, and most of the council have come and seen that school, and it's a first-class program and project. This will be built to same or higher standards because this could be a new build, but the, but the building is 150,000 square feet, give or take, it's going to take more than nine, 10 months to construct that school. But, we can, if the process for permitting is expedited and moves quickly and done in a way that's not holding us up, we can have a set number of those classrooms open next, coming, this coming fall, and then open the rest of them up the next fall. I think that's realistic and that's doable. Scott, is that fair?
Quick question to Development Services, and this question would be to Sergio. Permitting-wise, is there any other municipality that they need to contact to work with any permits other than ourselves, the City of Homestead?
There are other agencies that they need to be in contact with, like Fire, Derm, their county-type agencies, and whatever state permits they may require and inspections, but that would be part of the building process that they will have to undergo.
Do you see that as somewhat of an issue with the permitting process because that's what we were speaking about right now, according to Mr. Hage? I don't want, we don't want everyone to think that it's just our permitting process that can hold this up or move it forward, that there are other agencies that are involved and we have no control of that. So, my concern is, and the reason I want to put this out there is so that everyone is clear that we only have partial in working with this and moving this forward, we're partial in this, there's other agencies that are involved. What agencies would that be in particular, just so for the record?
For building permit per se, you have HRS, you have, like the mayor mentioned, you have Derm, you have Fire, you have WASA, you have, you know, a number of agencies that get involved in the typical permit process, you know. And then in addition, from the planning perspective, you have the notice of proposed change that they were, that they are undergoing. That involves the state, and, you know, all of these things can be done concurrently, but, you know, it's your typical building permit, especially all the agencies that get involved in an institutional project like this, like the ones I just mentioned. Nothing out of the ordinary, it's just typical building process.
And I think also to complete Sergio's answer, we have received three letters from an interested, you know, an interested property owner raising some issues that we're in the process of analyzing. And at the moment, we don't see a problem, but it is, it will be, you know, to comment upon us before this lease is approved, to go through every one of those issues carefully. They haven't been raised lightly, and so, you know, prior to the time the lease would come to you, and we're working with Sergio and our staff to have, to be able to advise you as to whether there's any other issues that are involved. So far, Sergio's done some work and doesn't see any, but I, that could, that could be another issue that might come up, that could, that could cause a delay, if there's, if there's an issue there that has been raised that had some validity to it.
Yeah, that was going to be another question that I had, was that was there any other issues being, I mean, we need to understand that just building a school is just, you know, we don't just build a school, there's a lot more that goes into it. And so, I just want to make sure that we're not tangling or, or just having unsolved issues, which has been some, the concern that I've heard up here already with some, with other council members, where that we are not pressing through this and leaving, and finding an issue later on, that's going to basically hurt us.
The way the lease is written, I think it's an important point that you raised, I mean, the city can only do so much.
Correct.
And I think that we're certainly moving ahead as quickly as we possibly can on this thing. But I think the point you raise is correct, which is either as a result of the issues that have been raised in this series of three, you know, serious letters that we got, or something else. If another agency gets involved, then, you know, that's outside the city's control, whether it be one of the ones that Sergio mentioned or the State of Florida. I mean, that's, and the way the lease has been written is that all those approvals, the responsibility for getting all those approvals are on the charter school operator. All we can do is, if the, the business transaction is satisfactory, get the lease done, and then it's up to them to go get the approvals. But certainly, I don't think it would be accurate to represent to them that the city's in control of all these permits, and I think that's the point that you're raising.
Correct.
We have no way of knowing, not having completed our analysis of those letters or whatever else is out there to make any representations as to when all approvals would be done. That's the responsibility of the charter school operator, not the city. All the city can do is what the city can do.
Yeah, but I think, I think, Richard, in all fairness, you and I have been over each one of those letters, and I think in all fairness, we don't throw that out here at night to put the fear in these people-
Yeah, I know.
-that something's going to happen like that. I want to put the glasses half-full, not half-empty. I want to encourage you to move forward as quickly as possible and let us facilitate and do our part honorably and with integrity and move forward in the right direction. I mean, and if a lawsuit pops up, it goes, you've got your own attorneys, you know what to do. You know, we're not here to say, okay, today, you know, there's too many orange trees out there, you can't, you can't, I mean, come on, it's going to happen in every process, it always comes up. So, let's look at, let's look at the positive side, we're going to move forward.
Yeah, and that's been my, you know, I've said it from hearing the dais ever since this has come before us, that I really, really want to see this school happen. We need it, we want it, and I know we'll see it through, but we just need to make sure that we are being cautious with the concerns of this community as a whole, but nonetheless, I definitely want to see this school. So, and obviously, you have the staff's full attention here in a sense of, they understand urgency of this.
And we recognize and concur with your point that the city is not in control of the entire process and public works at the Dade County and state level and other areas we will go through. And we've done that this last year with the school we just built on your property, and we would do that again successfully.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. If, if a delay such as permitting or possible lawsuit or whatever came up somewhere, are portables ever an option with you guys? I mean, I know they're not an ideal situation to put students in or that, and I see you shaking your head no, but, and, unfortunately, they're used all over the world anymore. I'm just trying to look, you know, trying to explore other options and give people hope, or not hope, but, you know, if there is a problem that-
Yeah.
-that you guys do look outside the, outside of the building.
Yeah, just to be clear, we've brought that up, and you can imagine dozen different times across the state in different areas when needed. The permitting process for portables is the same as for a permanent school. So, the truth is, is that we have to go through this process.
Got you. Okay.
I mean, Jonathan, while you're at the podium, do you foresee, other than the normal permitting process, which we both know and understand can be tough at times, do you foresee anything that would keep you from, you've seen all three letters, you know where we're at?
We've had preliminary meetings with just about every department from Derm on down. I mean, they know what's coming, I think we're well situated. The one wild card from the development side where I sit is Miami Dade County Public Works. They, Palm Drive is a county road, and because we're putting addition, our intention is to put additional exits and ingress egress on Palm Drive, they're going to weigh in, and I can tell you that the school district has a requirement that Miami Dade County Public Works sign off on everything before you can build your school. And they're, they're very difficult in their perception of what they want to see within the property, not just outside the property. So, I expressed to Mr. Perinos that we would probably need your city municipal assistance with Miami Dade County Public Works and letting them know that you wanted this direction with the exits on Palm Drive, and that you, you know, once we get to a plan we agree on, that you support it as well. I think that's the biggest one, and then secondary to that, maybe Miami Dade County Fire review, because sometimes that can just get lost for weeks.
Right.
But that's really our biggest concern.
Okay. All right, further questions?
Yes, Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I've got a couple of issues that I'd like to address first to the staff. Julio, how financially feasible do you see this being for the city?
Interference to the proposal that they submitted? Of course. Well, that, that's beyond my expertise, so I couldn't give you an answer one way or another on that. That's us, that's what I can tell you.
Another question. Then in that case, do we have anybody on staff that can, that can do this?
I don't believe we do.
Right, that's the question and concern that I have because we are operating in an area that we don't have professional persons operating in. And we don't want to rush, and I keep hearing, I heard Mr. Hage say, between, we need a decision or a contract signed within a week or two. I think that's where mistakes are made, because when we rush into things like this, and as I've heard many of my colleagues say, that the city is not a good business operator in anything. Any business that we have entered into has come back into lawsuits and has nothing been profitable for the city ever. And I think when we rush into issues, certainly like of this magnitude, I think that we set ourselves up for the next council, whoever it may be, to deal with our liability issues that we have rushed into or created. So, with that being said, since you don't feel as in your capacity as interim city manager that you don't know what the, how feasible this is, then what is your recommendation to the council?
Put you on the hot seat. Put you on the hot seat. Look forward.
Actually, well, I think that's why we're here.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm talking to Julio.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. I think that's why we're here, to make sure that we have a direction, that we know where we're going. I mean, in, in essence.
But we don't, because we don't have the expertise in the area that we're deficient in. So, how do we address this issue? Because it is, it is a, it is a very serious issue that we're entering to. I've not seen anything that says anything different, and I have very concern about this transaction. And as an elected official, it is my job to protect the interests of the city. And so, with that, what do you see, that, that you advise us to do?
Well, we have two sets of attorneys here that are working on this.
Financially, financially, they're, they're experts in, in attorney of law, but I'm talking about finance now. Have we done an analysis of any of this?
No, us or the city, no.
Okay. We're here to protect the interests of, of all, all citizens and all people that have invested interest in this city. And I think to enter into this prematurely without having the necessary expertise onboard to kind of help draft this, I think we're making a critical error at this junction. I think it's really premature, and I think we really need to slow down the process, because...
It's one person's opinion, relax ladies.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've given respect to the audience, Mayor.
That's what it's different.
And I think that, I've heard charter schools signed, and I've not heard the other coin of, of the story, and as relates to these documents that have surfaced, I like to hear, since this is open to the public, both coins, both sides of the story, are both different avenues, because it is very becoming of us to make sure that everything is transparent. That's the word I've heard tonight, so I want to make sure we hear all sides of the story, not just one side.
Sounds fair, this is a public meeting, so come on, come on, come on to the podium, if you've got something to say, please. Come back. Well, you just cut your, you just cut your neighbor.
You just cut, let's tramp him off. That's what happens when you're slow.
I'm younger, I can move faster than him. Kevin Sullivan, 1860 Southeast 6th Court. First off, I'm here tonight not to speak against charter school. I think we deserve a high school that we can be proud of for our children. But I have a couple of thoughts I run by. One, the mayor mentioned public hearings. I was at the public workshop, which was a workshop done in public, but the public didn't have any part of it. So, that's kind of a misnomer there. But on the way to that public workshop, the doctors got me on some new medicine, and I had this thought.
My God.
I had this thought, it's your question. Fourteen million dollars, the same character, I mean, the same people were going to give four or five years ago. And now, it was, that night it was a dollar a year. But Councilman Burgess reached back and grabbed it, and he said it was fifteen million. Eh, so what's a million dollars among friends? Not much. My question here is, I haven't remembered if there was even a proper land use change done for this. If there was, so be it. I'm sure the records would be there. And the big issue for me, living in that community, watching the disaster that charter schools did for six years with their traffic, they couldn't get their act together, and that was only, at the time, eight hundred students. Now, they're telling me they're going to have eighteen hundred students, plus the eleven hundred that are over in the K-8 school. My God. And they're going to use the ballpark to drive through, and we're thinking about letting somebody else take over the use of that. How do you negotiate fairly with a new entity taking over the baseball stadium and tell them, oh, the whole front part of your place you can't use because the kids' cars are going to be coming in and out of there? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Trantham?
Thank you. Mr. Trantham, 2375 Southeast 7th Place. I only have a couple of issues to talk about. Very briefly, I'm not going to go back and rehash the safety issue, because I'm very happy that this Phase Two, at least, is not right in the middle of the Acuus, it's moved over a little bit to, to Kingman Road. However, it is interesting, I find it interesting, that we went from a dollar a year to ninety thousand dollars a year. Reminds me of about ten years ago, when we had the famous eighty-three acres over here that the, that the Speedway wanted for two million dollars, and then all of a sudden we had a third person, or a third party come in there and say, I'll give you three million. And it went from two million to three million, and the Speedway says, no, we have to have that property for parking. They really wanted it for a drag strip, but we stopped that. And, and it became a three million dollar piece of property very quickly. This property, we don't know what this property's worth, and nobody up here knows what it's worth. That's why they're, they're hum-hawing and, yeah, we need a finance guy. Well, I didn't major in finance, and I didn't major in structural engineering, so you don't have to worry about me talking about that to you. My PhD is in education, and I can tell you that the state of Florida will give, this year, six thousand five hundred per student, which is pretty close to what Mr. Burgess came out with, I'm glad he figured that out. It's actually, my little computer says four hundred and ten million dollars. But, the reason, of course, I said five hundred million, and it was laughable, is because that's just this year. Don't you think that they're going to give more next year, and the next year, and the next year? And then in the thirty-five years, you're going to get more than six thousand dollars? See, right now, the state of Florida is number fifty, fifty, of all the states in per-student funding for education. Number fifty. That's how little we care about education. And I'm very proud to have charter schools, and private schools, and public schools now working to try to, to work through this terrible situation where we're not funding the schools, no matter what they are. We're not funding them properly. But with ninety thousand dollars a year, that's three million dollars for that property, instead of fifteen million, as you suggested. And it's got to be a five hundred million dollar, half a billion dollars coming in. And that doesn't even include things from the federal government, the grants and the capital improvements that are monies that are available through different sources and will be available, as they do have to build more schools, if indeed, the Constitutional Amendment Eight, or whatever it is, does not pass. They're going to have to build more. So, what's going to happen is they're going to have to come up with more money for actual physical buildings. And I don't know if any of you building, have been in these buildings, they're forty years old, thirty-five, forty years old. But I have, as an educator, and I can tell you, some of these buildings, these school buildings, they're only being held together by the cockroaches and the rats got together and decided, hold hands. And the walls aren't falling down. But this group, I believe this group can do anything. If they put the parking on the other side of that lake, I believe that they can walk across that lake. Because that's what you're being sold. You're being sold a bill of goods. And I hope it works out, but I still, my argument has always been, and will always be, that particular property, not that school. I like this school, I think this is the best of the charter schools, Charter Schools USA. I really do. And I've seen a lot of them, folks, in my, in my tenure. So, I believe it's a great charter school, I really do. But it's in the wrong location. God forbid a plane hits that Phase One, the way we saw it on the day they cut the ribbon, when those planes are right on top of us. You took, well, you think there won't be lawsuits then? Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Patrick Gliber, 1717 North Bayshore Drive, representing the Keyes Gate Community Association. I only have a couple of things to say, I'll be real quick. What I'm taking exception is to the fact that the association was approached. The association has not been approached. Nobody has talked, talked to anybody on the board members. So, I'm not just saying, hey, just let us be in our, I stood up here and said, this is a very, very important thing for our community, but I got fifteen thousand people that I got to answer to, and the traffic here is major. So, we haven't received traffic study, you said we were going to meet, we weren't met, you know, that kind of stuff. And I know that's going to come and bite me, because they're going to say I'm trying to slow it down. I'm not, I'm really, really not trying to slow it down. I, I canceled a vacation to be here tonight to do this, so I'm not trying to slow it down. Second thing here is the, the fact that if it appears that we're going to slow it down, one of the things that stood up, and it's really none of my business, but the, the rent and no escalation. And I said, hey, you know what? We're not opposed to escalation. I, I don't know if you guys or whoever the parties are, are negotiating intelligently, because in two minutes, if you can say, hey, we can do it, we're not opposed to that, why not do it a week ago, or three days ago? Present it now, present your best offer now, and then we can move on. That's it. Meet with the homeowners, meet with the delegates, meet with the board, and do your best offer, and then we can all put it to bed.
Sounds fair. Thank you. You were going to the Bahamas, weren't you?
Hi, Shenasee Quetzalcoatl, 2380 Southeast 5th Court, Northgate Village. Representing a City of Homestead resident, as well as an educator for the Keyes Gate Charter School. I think you guys should take into consideration that if you prolong the building of this high school, you're actually putting a cap on the growth of the City of Homestead. I personally was grown and raised in Kendall, did not want to move to Homestead. No way was I going to Homestead. Why? Because I'm a newlywed, and there was not a great school that had a consistency where I wanted to send my children, until I found Keyes Gate. And if you look at the high schools around the area, they are not A-plus schools. Look at the elementaries, look at the middle schools, they are not A-plus schools. The only school within the City of Homestead that is an A-plus is Keyes Gate Charter. Okay? We need to make sure that, yes, we're talking about the money and we're back and forth, and you were talking about the profit, but if you walk into that school, there is no profit. You see smart boards in these classrooms, you see new books for these students, you see extended resources, you see curriculum resource teachers that are there extended hours. And we need to make sure, at the end of the day, that we're looking at the bigger picture. It's about the children, not about the money, not about the land, it's about the kids. It's about the future that's going to be sitting there, because guess what? My students are going to be the future, my students are going to be those council members. But what happens if we cap it at eighth grade? Then what happens? They go to Homestead High, they go to South Dade, which are not A-plus schools. So, then what happens? A student who's an A-plus student, four, five, level sixes in F-Cat, they go to a school where they don't have the resources that charter schools is offering to the children. So, I think we need to make sure that we keep that in mind, as well as extending the process. We need to make a decision, we need to get these schools built. Because if not, you are holding the growth of Homestead. Because people are not going to want to come here, they don't want to send their kids. You wouldn't want to send your kids to a F-school, D-school, and you sure as well wouldn't want your child to be being taught in the portable. You, the environment of a student is more important than anything else, because if not, they will not learn, and they will not succeed, and they will not be the future people that are sitting in those chairs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dawn Desborough. I live at 2815 Dunwoodie Place in Homestead. I'm a mom of a Keyes Gate student, and I'm the homeroom mom, and I'm a member of the PTSO, very proudly. This is the first PTSO and the first school that I felt so very strongly about. My son was below, he, he'd gone to public schools his whole life, and we moved from Jacksonville to here, and he was below in everything. And we come here, and now, after being a Keyes Gate student for three years, with all the crying over the homework, and, you know, late nights trying to get a project due or something, he's actually above state level. And it only happened because of Keyes Gate. He reads, in the fourth grade, he read at an eighth grade level. That didn't happen because of public schools. Public schools get more money to do what they do than charter schools. But charter schools are able to take that money and do extremely well with it and benefit the students. And I wanted to address the traffic issue. I know people have issues with the traffic, I've seen it. Some of these people are crazy the way they drive, they need to get off their cell phones, and they need to pay attention to what they're doing. But, when you go to Farm Life Road, and you see what a craziness the absolute out-of-their-mind parents are doing at Gateway, you will applaud us Keyes Gate parents, because it is nothing compared to Gateway, absolutely nothing. They're parking in the medians, they're in the middle of the road, they're, they're not observing any laws, and they don't respect anything around that area. The Acuus, I want to address this. I live in the Fairways, and before that, I lived in Palm Isles. My husband's a pilot, so he's flying over my house every day. And I can tell you that I can sit and count on my hands and toes every day how many planes fly over my house. It's my house, my neighbor's house, my neighborhood. That school is no more different than my neighborhood, okay? If they're going to fall out of the sky, they're going to fall out on my house, or they're going to fall out on my neighbor's house, or at the park. That school is not in any more danger than my home. So, that being an issue, that needs to be dropped, that's getting real old, and I'm tired of hearing it. Because nobody's worried about, if I get hit in my home, they built that house there. Why are they worried about these kids? We're all in the same area. Let's see, Mr. Trantham was talking about the state of Florida, and we're number fifty in education. Well, that is because it takes so much red tape to get a school put in this state to do anything. You've got to go through so many channels to do anything, the red tape is incredible. You know, if we made it a little bit more easier, and a little bit more affordable, maybe it would happen. Obama is...
I'm sorry, time's up, I'm sorry.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Terri Son, 2999 Northeast 191st Street, Aventura, Florida. I represent Michael Lobb and Astrid of the Keyes Gate 3 Trust. I am here, not to say if the charter school's good or bad, I'm only here to bring out certain things that Mr. Weiss was kind enough to bring out before. There's several letters and several issues that need to be addressed, and we haven't had response to those letters. And I don't know if you want me to submit it into evidence here, or if it automatically goes as evidence as part of the committee of the whole...
Each of the council members has all of your letters.
Yeah, we have.
Okay. Does everybody have a copy of it, Exhibit Q? Okay. Exhibit Q to the 1993 agreement specifically says that this land is supposed to be used for public purposes. I'm not saying that a charter school's not a great use for this property, but the issue becomes, how do you amend that zoning? What is a land for public purpose? It's technically a park. Parks do not include schools, and it's got to be open space. There's, there are a whole bunch of issues that we need to deal with, and we need to go through a checklist to get there. I'm not saying that a charter school is not a good use of any property, especially where you hear these parents who so eloquently speak on behalf of the children. But at the same point in time, it could cost the city millions of dollars if it violates the NOPC and the DRI. And so, before you take that step, and Mr. Malzannado, I will applaud your point, it is not just the City of Homestead that has to approve the permit, it's the state, because this is part of the DRI. And so, it's not just a simple, oh yes, let's sign off on a permit. It gets much more complicated. I'm not a zoning lawyer, I'm just raising the issue because it's really important that everybody consider these issues before we move forward. I have other minor points too, but the biggest one is the Exhibit Q to the 1993 agreement, and the other violations which will occur if the charter school goes there based upon the 1993 agreement. Mr. Weiss is shaking his head yes.
So, we've set the 93 agreement aside, so to defend those, do we need to bring the 93 agreement back out? Talk to me, Mayor.
We set the, we set the litigation regarding the 93 agreement aside, but she's just saying...
I know, but it's a two-way street here.
I, well, that's, you know, that's, that's a, for her, yeah.
I'll be more than happy to sit down and negotiate the 93 agreement whenever you want. Just you set the date and we'll be there.
We attempted to do that for about sixty days.
In sixty days from now?
With one of our council members who is absent, to save it.
The other question is also whether or not this is in violation of the Setback to the UDB. And so, all of these issues, I, you know, all these issues need to be addressed and spoken about in public, and discussed and analyzed before a lease is signed. Have no comment on the lease, whether it's good or bad. We like Charter Schools USA, we like other charter school people, and I'm a, I'm a function of a public school in Dade County, and my kids both go to public school in Dade County, so I have nothing but great things to say about Dade County Public Schools. I know they haven't been great here, but that's another story. So, that's it, I just want, if, I don't have to read the mancy, would you like me to submit the Exhibit Q?
No, they're, I mean, I...
Will you submit it to the committee? Will you submit it to the council members, please?
I've, I mean, I've told the council, and I'll repeat myself again, that I agree with her, that the council's aware of these issues, that they will be dealt with. You'll have a report from Sergio and from us prior to execution of the lease.
No, we need an, excuse me, I need to have an ability to see what your conclusion is before you execute the lease.
Answer our question.
I'd be glad to share our conclusions with you before we execute the lease.
Thank you, sir. Both on the 93 and Exhibit Q.
On the items contained in your letter.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Richard.
I have a question, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
A couple of statements were made. Are we referring to the 93 agreement that has been discussed under executive session? Is that what we're referring to, information from that?
Under the what?
That we've been discussing in executive session?
We're talking about the 93 agreement that is...
It's been set aside.
...litigation which has been stayed for a certain period of time. Correct.
So what was it that we agreed to right now? Because we're still within that executive session.
No. We, what we did was in, there's litigation pending regarding the 93 agreement. The, the parties have agreed to basically toll that litigation...
Right.
...for a period of time. And this discussion, they're raising, it doesn't prevent them from raising issues under the, under the agreement. It just says we're not gonna continue to litigate it. It sounds like...
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Christina Pender. I live at 283 Southeast 31st Terrace. I'm a parent. I have two kids that attend Keys Gate Charter. I have one that's in the third grade, and I also have another one that's in the seventh grade. And I am one of those parents that drop my kids off every day and that pick them up every day. So I see the traffic that comes in. What I can honestly say on 344th Street, it's actually slowing a lot of the people down that are coming from the Speedway, because there is a school zone. We moved from Miami Gardens, Florida, and wherever we lived, there were always planes flying over. So there should really be no issue of planes, because no matter where you stay, there's gonna be planes that are gonna fly over regardless. I was asked while I was sitting down, did I live in Keys, in the Keys Gate community? To be honest, I don't think that really makes any sense. Where I live, I live in the City of Homestead. We pay our taxes with the City of Homestead. So it doesn't matter what community you live in. I'm just a concerned parent. I have my seventh grader who's very excited about the high school. He's, right now, he has three advanced classes. And for him to be on that level, I'm very proud of him as a mother and as a parent. And I don't think that there are certain things that, you know, are being addressed, saying that the way the parents are, the way the kids are at the school. You need to look at how many of us actually have kids, school-age kids, that are going to these schools. And a lot of the ones that are coming up here and speaking, they don't have school-age kids. So they don't know what it's like to take your child to school every day, to volunteer into the different classrooms, to go to the meetings, and to be there to pick your kids up at the end of the day. So I think that this is something that everyone needs to take into consideration. I am all for the high school.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ma'am. A quick question going back before we get too far gone on this zones. Richard, when do you think we'll have some kind of an opinion from you and your, and possibly from your staff or whoever's working on this for us?
We've gotten a good way into it. I would say certainly by the end of the week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
My name is Duane Pender. I live at 283 Southeast 31st Terrace, Homestead, Florida, 33033. The gentleman brought the thing about the baseball stadium. When was the last time we had an actual sporting event that took up enough space that would hinder the actual parking or travel from the school? Or, as far as them in the morning, we've never had an event since I've been here. There's never been an event. Since I've known of that I lived in Miami, there was never a major event at this complex. And how long has it sat idle doing nothing? Are we gonna continue to let it sit idle? Either way it go, the city's gonna pay some money in reference to this property just sitting there. So to say that we're gonna hinder an event from going on, most likely an event that would take place would be after school hours. And I'm quite sure there's not gonna be a major event that's gonna go on during school hours, eight o'clock in the morning during Monday through Friday. And most of the sporting events that do take place are events that our kids go out and play in that park, which is not really a major event, which probably takes place on the weekend. If any event takes place out there, right now, the most use that we get out of it is from Keys Gate, when they go and practice on the field. So to say that that would stop us, a major event, no. When the last time a major team came to practice, that was the whole purpose of having the complex, but it hasn't happened. Another issue, planes. If you talk to an air traffic controller, there are thousands of planes in the air all times of day, over every neighborhood. They may not be within our sight, but they're there. There's a plane flying over us right now as we speak. Do you see it? No. Is it a threat? Yes. But how much of a threat is it? And to say that we're worried about a plane crashing into the school, I mean, we do the numbers on it. What's the likelihood of it happening? I see jets fly over my house on a daily basis. I mean, to the point where if I put on a pair of binoculars, I could see the pilot. So let's not make the flyover an issue. Let's not make an event at the baseball stadium. The issue is having a place for these kids to go to school, where they can continue on the level that they're on now. I mean, to cut them off and cap them at eighth grade and force them into a school where they don't wanna be, that's like if your kid doesn't wanna do something at home and you force him to do it, of course he's gonna rebel. So are we gonna have 1,800 kids rebelling or 1,800 kids excelling in school? I would prefer for them to excel. Let's not have rebellious kids in the neighborhood that have nothing to do but vandalize and think of mischievous things to do. Let's keep them excelling in this charter school. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Margaret Wells, 533 Northwest 14th Street, Homestead, Florida, registered voter. First of all, first thing I wanna do is invite everyone here to our Harvest Festival that is taking place at our school campus Saturday, 10 to 4. It'll be a lot of fun. Please make sure, please make an effort to come out. So that being said, I have the privilege of my children being involved at Keys Gate since it's open. We were able, like I said, come in the first day it was open. If we were to cap or to decide whatever decisions made here that we cannot build the school, there's going to be approximately 200 four-year-old parents who would be kindergarten students next year that would be sorely, sorely upset because they are on that waiting list right now to go into that school for next year. So keep that in mind. And to go along with that, we have ninth graders who have chosen to, and their parents have chosen to go to Keys Gate Charter School because they see a future being able to graduate from a great school like Keys Gate Charter School. If we decide not to build that new school, they will have the opportunity to go there, but I think there may be some limitations going down the, down the road, and who knows what can happen. But I wanted, I wanted to throw that in there because it's not only that we're gonna cap it off, there's might be seats that we may not even be able to, to kids who are actually enrolled right now. They might be turned away. Secondly, I know there's been a lot of discussion about let's hurry up and get this done, and let's rush and get this done. I'm a little bit offended by the intentions or the speculation that this is a rush job. Eight years ago, when my daughter went to Keys Gate, that's when discussions were made that a high school was in the works. And I know, more importantly, in the last five years, it's been accelerated. So to say that we're rushing into something is a little offensive, to be quite honest. I don't attend every city council and City of the Whole meeting. I have attended a lot in the last five years. I've learned a lot about the city government. Some I've enjoyed learning, some I've not enjoyed learning. But again, let me just say, to say that we're trying to rush into something is a little offensive. I've been to a lot of these meetings, and a lot of these same issues are being discussed every time. I wrote down a lot of notes, AQs, we talk about that every time. I don't know if there was this much discussion when that beautiful hospital was negotiated and built. And every day, there's about 500 people in there. And I know it's not maybe directly in the AQs, but if something drastic were to happen, they would be affected as well. So, you know, we hope to God nothing ever happens, but, you know, let's be realistic. I guess I have more faith in the Air Force than, than a lot of people do. But that being said, one other thing I wanna touch on, I have about 10 seconds. About a year and a half ago, we were in this room talking about these things, and there were people that were for this high school that now are against it. So my question, are there interests that are coming up that are not solely for the children of Homestead, and are there people that are looking out for their own special interest now?
I wanted you to wait till you got back in. I heard you had an open microphone and have an audience, and this will be on YouTube later. You know, start the clock, though. I haven't given my address. You did it to me last time. 533 Northwest 14th Street, Homestead, Florida, 33030. In the 90s, it was the big tobacco company, and 2000 is big pharmaceutical company. Now it seems to be the big charter school company. Everybody wants a slice. I understand about negotiations. I have a problem with that. But I knew when the mayor brought up, says, hey, let's negotiate. I knew everybody's gonna get in line, and they're gonna nitpick it to death. And again, I'm just, I'm not always right, but I'm rarely wrong. And I don't get that. Well, I do get it. But what's disturbing me more than anything, I don't wanna get into the details. My wife does that, and she did very good. I'm not the politician. I don't have the wisdom of Solomon. However, I do realize that just because you get older, I am learning, you don't get wiser, nor do you mature. I'd much rather you sit up here and say, don't sit there and tell me, oh, I'm for the charter school. Oh, I want this, I want that. And then come up here with this nitpick and stuff. Where have you been the last eight years? Tell me you're against it, because I cannot stand hypocrisy. All right? Tell me. Come up to and tell me. And you know what? I'll shake your hand, and I'll respect you as a human being, than to sit there and tell me you think that you're doing good. Because you're not fooling me. I'm the one who's crawling out my seat trying to keep them acting redneckish. But I'm, like I said, I'm not a politician. And that really burns me. And to have an expert, I'm, expert, what is that? What's an expert? I do know one thing. You, listen, we, you may see four, three gentlemen here, four gentlemen, but what you don't see is what's behind them. And those are people with kids. And my wife gave you the numbers. You got a charter school that's working. And I've seen what your Florida dollars can do. If I was satisfied with the Florida dollars, I would send my child there. But I don't want to. So I, you know, am I missing the boat here? Have I burnt everybody? No, the hot air came out, and now we can let it settle down? Because I'm tired. I just, I don't understand it. I do understand it, but please tell me. Look, come to me and say, you were wrong, Greg, because here's how I really feel. I can respect that. Don't sit there and tell me you're for the charter school, especially if you're an attorney. Thank you.
Tell me how you really felt.
Felix Diaz, 519 North Chrome Avenue. Excuse me. I've come to most of these meetings, and there was always a concern of what value is this gonna have for the city at the end of the term? We don't wanna take a dollar and keep the property. Tonight, I'm hearing about, well, the property's gonna appreciate. We're talking about lower numbers, it's gonna change. Well, wouldn't it be the benefit for the city if they do keep this building at the end of this lease? Now, we're talking $90,000. Well, I'm not sure how we come up with that amount, but I would think we should somehow base it to the students that are gonna attend this school. Because that's the way they're gonna make their money. The state pays them a certain amount. Tie a certain dollar amount to each student, and then that would be fair. For example, if you build this school next year, they may not have 1,800 students. They may have 900, but yet you still wanted to pay 90,000. So I think you should consider maybe a per-student cap enough to take care of that lease and protect the city. And at the end, you can still get that property back, have all that's appreciated, and continue to do something with that property. I'm not sure what's happened when it comes to income from that property in the last 20 years. I believe all you have is expenditures. And you finally have a group that's interested in doing something for the community. Now, right of first refusal, I also heard today, well, I don't accept right of first refusal. All that means is, if you have someone that's interested in their property, they have the right to make an offer just like they do. That's all they're asking for, something fair to say, listen, they wanna pay three, well, we're not gonna pay that. You can have it. But if they're gonna pay the same amount, you have a school going on there already, I don't see a problem with a right of first refusal. One of the last things is the traffic. I, my student, my son goes to Cheese Gate High School, Keys Gate High School. My daughter goes to the, to the middle school. The traffic is from 7:45 to 8:30 every morning. That's the traffic, and most of it is contained inside the stadium. The afternoon, what are we talking, from a quarter to three to 3:45? Again, all of it is inside the stadium. So I really don't understand this major concern of, oh, my God, all of this traffic. What are we gonna do? Right now, there's policemen that are helping with the traffic. I don't see a problem with it breaking any kind of right of way, yield of way. They're there helping the movement. So I really don't understand. And last but not least is the AQs. You've done your due diligence. The Air Force has been here and told us. It's fine with us. It's outside enough of it. And so why that's even an issue at this point, I have no idea. Thank you.
Thank you. I like your suggestion of tying it per child, because if the State of Florida starts paying more per child, you'll pay the City of Homestead more. All right, we'll negotiate something on that. If they don't, then it works.
Anything I'd like to do is, we have these seven issues that we need a guidance on. I'd like to go through them one by one, get your advice. But I would, I will tell you this, that if there's items that need to be, this is a very awkward forum to be able to do this. If there are items to be discussed, I'm gonna request that somebody from the council be there and discuss it with us, so that we can bring back, I mean, it is, you know, they're proposing something. I don't know, you know, I'm not really getting anything very clear from you, you know, it's a, a formula. I really could use somebody like you've done in other cases to sit with us and negotiate this stuff out. I know I'm sort of springing this on you. I apologize. But it just, I want, I know that you, we wanna move forward with this, and I don't want another meeting like this where I bring forward, you know, this is the best I can do kinda thing. But anyway, think about it. Okay, the name of the tenant...
Mayor.
Yeah.
Before we go there, I do have one more comment to make.
Sure.
Thank you. I did explain at the last meeting how we arrived at the numbers, and it certainly wasn't, I mean, we're all throwing out titles and credentials. I have a master's, but I'm not about to start saying that that's the reason why I arrived at this decision. Part of what Councilman Williams has said tonight is true and correct. We do not have the staff to guide us as we would in other, in other areas, in other projects. And so diligently what a council person does, what I have done is, I received the information, and then I contact the people that I think would be able to provide me with the information to further guide my decision. In that scenario, it would perhaps be Mr. Brea, but it hasn't been in this, in this instance. It could be the attorney. As a matter of fact, it has been Charter Schools USA. At the last meeting, I stated that this project outside of this room, and I know that the parents that are here, that are the ones speaking, but as Councilman Burgess has said, there's an entire city that we have to represent. And so I am taking the emotion out of it. I'm not, some people have even said that this is a mayor's project. I'm not looking at it like that. I'm not attaching it to any one individual politician on this diet. I'm looking at it for its value, the project for its value. It had the support of a dollar a deal, and that was not a good business deal. I heard from many, many, many residents who are here tonight that that was not a good deal for the city. They wanted something of more value, more than what we were presenting. And so I contacted Charter Schools USA, and I said, let's sit down, something, there's gotta be a happy medium so that everybody can get, feel like they were part of the process, feel like they had some participation, and that we involved everyone's opinions in this process. And so I sat down with their representatives, and I said, I don't know, I sit on the Audit Committee for Miami-Dade School Boards, and I see a lot of financials for a lot of charter schools. And so what I wanted to know was projected revenue. I said, let me have some projected revenue so that I can have a percentage of that that I can start... I can start out with. I'm not just going to randomly select from the air $1, $50,000, $150,000, $250,000." One number was thrown out there before I met with them, was this deal of having them take care of the maintenance of the baseball stadium, and it was assigned a value to it. Well, I didn't think that that estimate was appropriate either. I mean, what, what formula was done to come up with that? It wasn't provided to me. And so I said, "Let's look at some real hard numbers." It was Charter Schools USA that provided some of the guidance as to where they thought they could land, so that this deal would not, and I said this at the last meeting, I don't, I'm not in the business of bankrupting you before you even start. I don't want to throw out a number out there and then start this air negotiating of 500, 250. No, I wanted to come forth with an educated estimate, which was something that we worked out. They landed at 90,000, they gave me an area of 75 to $100,000. Something that Councilman John Burgess has stated, that we would be foreteered. Now, a lot of these discussions cannot take place in private. I cannot speak to Councilman John Burgess and say, "Hey, what do you think of this deal?" I can't even speak to the representative and says, "Tell me what some of these other councilpeople are thinking." They can't do that, it's against the sunshine law violation. So the only time that I get to hear where the councilpeople stand on this is at a public forum. And at that time, I get to say, "Okay, I concede to that. If I want this project to move forward, I need to work within what the other councilpeople want." And that's why I say things like, "I would like to compromise on item two, I'm open to compromising on item three." As far as the right of first refusal, all I'm saying is that the stadium needs to stay out of it, that's all it was relating to, the stadium. I don't want the stadium to be tied into this lease procedure. All the other issues that were part of the right refusal state, I want to tell you that this project, to me, bringing a high school to the city of Homestead works, regardless of what it means politically, who it's tied to up here. And I am trying to make the best decision based on the fact that this deal had the support of a dollar a year going, and that was not correct. And I've spoken to Charter Schools USA, we cannot go forward like this. And so we reached this compromise, this is what it is. If you guys were here for the airport ordinance, we were involved in the same mess, trying to move forward, trying to make sure that the airbase was protected, and we compromised up here so that we could all be comfortable moving forward. And that's all I'm doing, I'm not flip-flopping. As a matter of fact, I've taken a beating from the parents that are here, this is like the sixth, seventh time that I've been here. And at the beginning, I said I didn't support it as it stood. It didn't matter whether I was booed or applauded or nothing, I was stating what I thought business-wise was the right decision to make. And that's what I will continue to do. I am sorry that we don't have the staff to fully sit up here and say, "This is the decision that we're going to make." We don't have a CEO that's leading the city, that's doing all this negotiating, doing all the talking to these representatives. Unfortunately, as it stands right now, we have to air it out in public forum like we're doing now. We're doing the best that we can, I certainly am doing the best that I can with the access and the resources that I have. Thank you.
Mayor, if I can finish up, please, if I can finish. Mayor?
You're asking to rule yes.
Thank you. In response to some of the comments, I take it all in stride. It is my responsibility, whether persons like it or not, to raise concerns and issues about where the city stands. And it's just being responsible in what people have entrusted us to do. And there are some things that I'm not going to agree to, there are some things that we're going to have disagreement over, but that is not to say that I don't support the project. I've not been here the last eight years, I've only been here four years, so I'm new in this city with that, so I don't know how that plays in the role. But either way, it is my concern to make sure that we represent the entire constituency of Homestead, and not, and to be objective in all the decisions that we make. And I raise concern about everything, not just any particular issue, but because I'm here as a fiduciary, it's my fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we protect the city and its interests. And that is what I'm here to do. With that said, to the mayor, to the attorney, Richard, when will you perhaps deal with the traffic study issue?
Traffic study is one of the items that was included in the three letters that we received, so by the end of the week. Probably our office won't deal with the traffic issue, that'll be something that Sergio will deal with, but staff will report to you about the traffic by the end of the week.
Okay. Now, how can we make sure, and take the direction of the, my colleagues, that we get somebody on board that has some kind of knowledge and expertise in what we're dealing with here? Because I hear Richard saying he just doesn't have any, he's asking, crying out for some guidance, and I don't think we're giving him the necessary tools to do that. What will be the most appropriate way to deal with this? Bringing on somebody to really look at this? Because this is for 35 years, I mean, this is not something that I take lightly. And so with that, I like to have somebody come in from the outside, who has some expertise and knowledge in what we're trying to do. And so that we make sure that we have exhausted all of our resources and opportunities to make sure that we make the best decision for the city of Homestead. And the best decision may always not be the popular decision, but we have to stand behind what we, the tools that we've been given. And unfortunately, we've not been, we've not been given very many tools to work with. So with that, it is my, my understanding that I think that we should really look at that, and I don't know how we would deal with that at some point. But I like to have something when I leave here tonight to know that we're giving you the right tools and equipment to work, Julio and the attorney.
Well, if you, if the, I think what it would take would be take a direction from the council to direct Julio to, you know, to bill and retain somebody to advise you on this. That's what it would take, a majority vote of the council to say, you know, a motion is to, to direct Julio to go hire someone.
Financial, financial, a person, we, a person who is knowledgeable about land, real estate, those kind of issues, evaluation.
I don't think it would be an appraiser, I think it would be someone that, that would provide financial advice to businesses dealing with land transactions. I think there are people that deal with those kind of things. And so if that's what the council wanted, certainly within Julio's financial authority, because I don't think it's going to be tremendously expensive. But if you wanted to do that, I think that there's, you know, there's people available to do that, but I think you'd have to direct them to do that. Because at this point, we basically decided, had the council using whatever resources they have making these decisions, which is, which is fine, but if you want to get some additional expertise, you could do it that way. So it would take a motion and a direction to Julio to go do that.
Okay. In order for me to be, you know, to feel comfortable about what we're entering into, that, you know, that is my suggestion. And, you know, I don't, I don't perceive, when we're entering a 35-year agreement, whatever the cost, you know, at this moment would be, it is, it's definitely will pay out in the end, so that we make sure that we have made the right decision and given the tools to do such. So with that, I don't have a problem. We'd time a certain date, because I don't want to slow down the process. So I would do that with a motion that by a certain time period, within a week or so, that we have this person to come in and do an analysis of what the project is. And that way, we're able to make a better decision on the terms of the lease from a financial responsibility.
Can I ask, can I ask a question while he has the floor?
He's looking for the motion.
No, I've not made the motion, but...
There's no motion, but my question to Julio, just in talking, discussing this now, you're going to be, you know, charged with bringing that about, just off the top of your head, you know, who do you see, what do you see, how, what is the first step that you're going to take in order to make this possible? I know it's, you know, we're right here on the cuff, because this is the way it needs to be done. And so that would be my first question. I'm just, I want to entertain my thought in the sense of how that's going to happen, so I could see if we could guesstimate a timeframe, so...
Well, absolutely, I have to do some research to find who's available and who has that knowledge that we're looking for, but I'm sure we can do that. I mean, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't be able to do that.
And what do you think timeframe would be? Just a guesstimation, that you could get that done? I mean, so we've done, you've done something like this in your time?
Well, I mean, if we, if, you mean, from the point that we actually acquire somebody?
And to take this one project and evaluate it financially?
I would say a couple of weeks to just be on the safe side.
And what dollar amount? Because I don't want to be something open-ended.
I don't think it's going to be so much, it's not going to be above my limit of 25. It's definitely going to be below that, because it's a very, it's not that straightforward, but it's very focused as to what we're asking, as to what we need. So I don't think it should be too much.
Okay. Just one more question. What would be the other option if this, if the motion is made and doesn't move forward, how are we going to proceed from here, as we stand today? And Richard, what were you thinking about as well? Because you had asked for counsel.
What I was going to do, if this motion is not, is not made or does not pass, I was basically going to speak, you know, to go down each item and say, "Okay, how do you feel about the rent?" And let you have a discussion about the rent, give us some direction about the rent, and I was going to draft the lease and put it on an agenda, you know, propose it to them, and put it on, that's what I was going to proceed, absent another step.
Richard, how many lawyers are in your firm?
Between 50 and 60.
And how many different types of law do you practice? A lot. And this is not something your friend can handle?
Can I tell you something? Jonathan Curry, who negotiated the lease for not, for ground zero, I mean, we've, we've worked on very sophisticated transactions, but the portion of this transaction that I, on every aspect of this transaction, I can advise you on. I can advise you on the indemnification and the, and the sign-offs and the assignment. The thing that I can't advise you on is the, is whether this number should be $1, or whether it should be, you know, $100,000. That's the only aspect I can advise you on. Otherwise, we're fully capable of handling everything. But just on the, just the pure financial terms, is not, is not something that we, especially because this is such a unique project, because it's not a pure commercial project, it involves public dollars and students, and also because it involves such a unique piece of property, which is, you know, you know, located within that area, and so it's not just a, you know, probably if this was a commercial lot on US1, and it was a certain mass group, we could give you an idea about transactions that we've done. But this is such a unique piece of property, that, and it's such a unique transaction, and that's, so that's beyond us.
With that being said, then, Mayor, with that being said, then, I make the motion that we retain a professional to come in and deal with that scope of work that we're needing. That is my motion.
Requires a second, Mr. Mayor.
You know, I, I'm going on the premise that the attorneys were okay with us going forward the way we were going forward, which was a dollar, so anything above that would be on the positive side. I mean, the attorneys didn't object to that lease term, the attorneys didn't stop us from going forward in that direction, so I can see now at this point...
I'm not stopping you from going forward here, I don't make, I'm not giving you advice or giving you an opinion as to whether a dollar is correct or not. It's not, it's not within my purview to be giving you advice on that.
If I can just add to that, though, the attorneys, I mean, that's what they're here for, if we're doing something that is not appropriate, we are to be stopped. I mean, by the very, by the very act that you allow something to go forward, it can be said that you are proving of it, because it's going forward. If you would have an objection to something, or if you would, at that point, at step one, say, "We need someone in here to," that is not going, that is going to give you information that I'm not able to give you, then at that point, I would have agreed. But we've gone 60, 70% here. I have a whole bunch of questions regarding the motion that has been made, but, you know, we'll go forward.
And just to answer, in your defense, and really, we keep hearing this dollar a year. It was a dollar a year, but at the same time, they were picking up our insurance and our complete expense of that baseball stadium that was $300,000 a year. So we keep forgetting that part of the, of the equation. I mean, I've heard numbers from 250 to 300 to 500,000, they were agreeing to pick up the entire maintenance of that operation. So it wasn't just a dollar a year. I wouldn't vote for just a dollar a year, it was a dollar a year plus, you're taking a big weight off us, a weight that everyone here said hasn't been touched in 10 years. 10 years, we have not made even close to the dollar to pay for that thing.
With the greatest of respect to Councilman Lovas, I sit here, I sit at council meetings all day long, and councils make business decisions...
Yeah.
...that I honestly wouldn't make. It's not my job to tell you, it's not my job to weigh the benefit to the students, the benefit to the city, the benefits to, it's not my job to do that. And again, on, and for 20, I mean, that's just the nature of my job. I have an opinion on everything, but I, the point is, you're the ones that are elected to make these business decisions, not me. And from time to time, I might have a private conversation with some of you about how I feel about something, but, and again, with the greatest of respect, it's not my job to tell you whether this is a good business transaction or not. I can tell you it's legal, I can tell you that it's a, you know, that there's certainly nothing that prohibits you from doing this, but I can't tell you that, and it's not really, really fair to ask me to give you that.
And in all fairness, an economist, doctorate degree in finance, whatever, they're never going to be able to weigh in, that's not their expertise to weigh in the value of an educational system that they bring to the table. No value there. Yes, ma'am?
I've never, in sitting at this dais, the attorneys have never recommended that we go outside and hire a consultant to give us business advice. It's new to me.
Well, first of all, with all, again, I'm doing, with all due respect to Julio, you have an interim city manager here, and in most cases, if the, if we had a full-time city manager on board, the city manager would have negotiated this transaction with our help. And I will tell you that in past years, when we've needed help, we have gone out. I remember a very terrible meeting where Dick Montalbano, who's the city's financial advisor, came in, and there was, it was a deal, the mayor may mention this, there was a transaction involving the racetrack. And we brought in Dick Montalbano, and he actually recommended against the transaction, because it was beyond the city's expertise to make a, to make a decision. There's many circumstances where the stat, where the manager automatically brings in, he brings in a traffic consultant, he brings in all sorts of people, because it's beyond our expertise. So we don't need, in most cases, the manager makes that decision to bring somebody else in, but in this case, it's not really fair. You have an interim manager who's doing the best he can, but in normal circumstances, this would be negotiated by the manager, and the manager would bring in whoever he needed to provide him advice. But it's not at all unique to bring in expertise, it's, you know, if the council feels like it's necessary.
Richard, with that, Mayor, with that, with that being said, have you attempted to reach out to professionals in order to help you in this process, Julio? And if not, what is stopping you? Because I would like to see you to move ahead and find someone. I think, you know, here's the issue, and I can't support this motion, and I'll tell you why. Because this is our community, and sometimes these professionals are minus that part of ownership in the community. You could bring a professional to advise you and advise us, but at the end of the day, this community has chosen us to make that final decision. And so I could confidently make a decision, I would like to be a part of the process if possible, to make sure that we are making the right decision for the community. I do speak to my community, I do go out and I find out what's going on. And the biggest issue here is that we want better schools. So, again, if you, if no, if you haven't gotten the direction, we'll get it today, that you go out and find out the help that you need, you need. And that you would ask this council, like you always do and should do, to, for their opinions. And let's bring it in. We've done it time and time again, you know, since we've been here in a year, and I think in the past, it's been done. What I do want to do is I want to make a point to those who are sitting here today, that there was, there was definitely a difference between Phase 1 and Phase 2. Phase 1 was a property that we owned, that's been sitting there doing nothing. So it was a lot easier for us to make the decision that we made at a dollar a year, but as the mayor has stated, there was another portion of that, and that we could live with. It was a win-win. Phase 2 is a vacant piece of property... Phase Two is a vacant piece of property that, again, that would be discussed. And that's separate of Phase One. Phase One, we agreed with it. It's there, it's working today, and now we're working on Phase Two. So that being said, Phase Two, I'm separating from Phase One, still wanting to see Phase Two completed. That would be my direction. I do want to see that school completed. My only concern that I brought up earlier was that of make sure we can make... If it could be there, let's make it be there. Another point I just want to make, and I'm kind of breaking away here, but I just wanted to state these points as we're, you know, now that I have the floor. Another point that I wanted to do is that I do not want the stadium to be part of Phase Two deal. I want that separate. But nonetheless, I would like to see something happen, if possible, with charter school, just because I think this community is tired of seeing that stadium sitting there doing nothing. And so that is the only... When I look at this, there's not gonna be no retail. There's not gonna be homes built there. There's not... I doubt if I'm gonna see a professional baseball team ever come in there again. So at this point, that's ours. It was left to, you know... A professional team came in, said we want to bring a team, and then they left. And then they said, like, here's a million dollars and here's a stadium, have fun. Now, at one point, we have to say, no more... There's no other team that's gonna come in here. So we need to do something, either tear it down or use it. And if we're gonna use it, use it for the benefit of our community. I understand that of a park, again, you know, that we could discuss later on Phase Three. So I will not be able to support that motion. That's it for now.
It hasn't been seconded, correct? Just gonna give them a chance right now. I'm gonna let you run the meeting here in a few minutes. Where I am, just relax, all right? If you want the floor, come to the podium, I'll let you have it. There is a motion on four. Do we have a second on the motion? Hearing no second, it dies for lack of a... The motion dies for lack of a second. Now, here's what I like to do as a chair. I would like to go back to listening to our attorney. I'd like to appoint our education chair to work with our attorney, work with our city manager, just as we've done in the past as we broke off the ninety-three agreement, the Redland Agreement, and different people worked on it, people that I thought were appropriate for it. And I think that this is your... This is your forte.
Be more than happy to step in.
Are there any objections that Councilman Maldonado works with the city attorney and the city manager?
How does the councilman feel about that?
I wouldn't have a problem with it. I would just ask, even though you have one of us working on it, you know, I like the fact that, you know, the numbers is there because there is numbers in this process. So I don't mind if Councilwoman Lobos would want to join me in this, you know...
It becomes a problem because of the sunshine.
Well, I know, but we're not meeting at the same time.
Oh. Well, you can co-chair. You sure could.
Can I tell you something? I'll express my opinion. Co-chairs are really bad.
All right, I'll take it then.
One person is better.
We'll take it. That's not an issue. I'll step up. That's not upon us. It's important for the community, so I'll be more than happy.
Maybe that there's not that much... Let me go through this list and get some direction. The name of the tenant...
I just think that one thing I would like to make sure we take care of, Richard, is that the vagueness that I spoke of earlier, or what I considered to be vagueness in some of the issues that were in that contract. We make sure that we understand where they're coming from and that we make sure we have the right language. And I guess this would go to John. And we understand what their full intent is because there were a couple of things that I took one way. You guys took one way, but they were expressing them another way. So we need to make sure that the vagueness is taken care of on the issues. Okay.
At this point, Richard, you get involved with it. So you tighten it all up and...
The name of the tenant, I don't think this is really an issue, John. We're just gonna... We'll just negotiate some language. Okay, the rent. The way the rent is structured and what they proposed to us is they've used different words, but they're basically paying us four dollars and sixteen cents per student. That's the way the rent's... They expressed it in a different way, but that's what they're paying us. And you just need to tell me whether that's okay. That means if they have the full eighteen hundred students, they're gonna get seventy-five hundred dollars. We used an example, if they have sixteen hundred students, it's gonna be six thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars per month because it gets reduced by that number. But that's the way the rent is... Somebody talked about, you know, having a per student. That's the way they proposed it.
I got a question.
Go ahead.
And maybe this is to the charter school. When you came up with that... And I did view the meeting because I was not here. But I'm sorry. I think that what were the key performing indicators of why you should pay... Offer that four dollars and sixteen cents?
We don't look at it that way. We look... In fact, I would recommend that the city not do it that way. It's actually not in your interest to do it that way because then if there's less kids, you make less money. And if there's more kids, you take the upside opportunity, but you really aren't setting it against what the financing structures. You want it on value, not on students. Now, you can do it that way, but it goes both ways. If there's only eight hundred kids in the school, then you pay less rent. If there's sixteen or eighteen hundred kids, you pay more. The school is gonna be built to only have so many kids in it. And the current plan is eighteen hundred students, total maximum. The way that these things work, and I think it is a good idea to have some expertise on your side to help you, though, but not... And I'm not gonna debate with you on this, council member, but I think the way I see this is that Ms. Lobos actually was right when she was going through her process, which is that if you see what happens at the county audits for charter schools and she sits on that committee, what they do is they break out what people pay for rent, including land leases. And so it's not a secret that the number that's on the table today meets or exceeds those numbers. And I would be perfectly happy with any process that would bring additional data to the table to give you the assurances that the number is the right number. And let me give you a couple of examples. In the current bonds that we just financed, the cost for land is actually less than what we're leasing or offering to lease to you right now. And the reason that we're capable, and this is, you know, it's pure business, of paying maybe a little more at ninety thousand dollars per year and even giving maybe an increase, that's what's negotiated here, if it's tied to the cost of what comes in, is because our intent is that we're building this off of something that's already successful. So the risk factor for us as a businessperson is less than if I was starting from scratch. So what I'm looking at here is that the cost of the land is relative to what I would have to pay in the private sector. And we looked at this, and the private sector, you know, this is what it comes down to. Either the city's going to make the money or a private developer's gonna make the money. That's what it comes down to. Let's just call it what it is. And at the end of the day, you have to do what's right for your citizens and what's right for your city. And what's right for the city is to negotiate a fair lease with us and give me one chance up or down to vote on it. Because at this point, I'll be honest with you, we've been doing this for five years. And I don't know how many times I can ask my parents to come out and kids to be up late on weeknights and do this. And so all I'm asking is a fair opportunity to negotiate something. I'm not asking for special deals, but I'm also asking for not special deals to be done against us. That's it.
Thank you. Let me make this statement to be clear. Because I think as this far that we have come, no one certainly appears denying access or to charter school to be in existence. That is not what the approach is. The approach from me, I can only speak for myself. We've come to this point, and as the first lease went through, we all took a beating at some point of the dollar in common of whatever the maintenance and all of that. But at the same time, this is a new phase. We learned from Phase One, and we're working with you to make sure Phase Two happens. I don't think nobody is trying to negate or stop the process of what you're doing. We're just... I'm trying to make sure that we arrive at a number that is fair, as you said, and equitable, that it makes sense for both of us. Let's be real. It's... You're gonna make money on it. And I think... Yeah, that's right. Because... Let me finish. Let me finish. At the end of the day, that's what capitalism is all about, okay? So there's no one trying to stop that. I think as in this capitalistic society that we live in, it is to make sure that we provide the best and also to make sure that the city is made whole and that we operate in some integrity and transparency as we say that we're going to do. So that is my observation, and that's what I'm trying to get out, to make sure that the city is protected, which is what we've been entrusted to do, and that we get the best opportunity on this deal.
Mayor, may I make a suggestion on this rent piece? Instead of a pro rata, because Mr. Hayes already said that he's okay with it not being pro rata. However, he also did say earlier in the presentation that in an effort to get the school out of the ground for purposes of next August, that we were gonna phase the school in. So as an example, there would be Part One of the school constructed, and the school would fill up halfway. And then the next year, the school would then... During the summertime, would be constructed, and you'd have a full school. So if you allowed some leeway, as an example, in the negotiations for us to talk about going to ninety thousand dollars, as we've talked about, over a period of three years while the school filled up, I think that would address the concern that Councilman Williams has had and Councilman Lobos has had. And that would encourage us to come out of the ground quicker, even with half of the building, just to allow for the high school to open up, which is in desperate need here of the people who are already in the high school. And so this way, we don't have to push and pull about this rent, but just let's... It's part of the reality of the number of students because obviously, the revenue, as we've stated before, the revenue driven into the school is directly related to the number of students that are in the school. And so given the community's need to build half the school now to make sure it's open, let's go ahead and give your lawyer a direction so that we can ramp up the rent schedule to the full seventy-five hundred dollars a month or ninety thousand dollars a year. That would be the suggestion.
Mr. Mayor, maybe I'm not understanding. What you had proposed to us
Yeah.
was four dollars and sixteen cents a student. That's what was proposed to us.
That's correct. I'm hearing something different out of the commission. So I'm trying to... I don't want to negotiate against ourselves, Richard, because I haven't heard something back, but I'm trying to find middle ground based upon what I'm hearing from Councilman Lobos and Councilman Williams and Councilman Burgess on how to drive this thing, how to drive that issue to provide you with appropriate direction so we can actually write something that's meaningful.
Mayor. So you're offering the ninety thousand dollars guaranteed for the first three years? Oh, I thought I heard that.
Mayor. Just my thoughts, if I could. I understand where they're at, and it's gonna take them three years approximately to get the full capacity out there of eighteen hundred. Pro-rated, my idea, pro-rated thirty-three percent each year or something, if that's agreeable, as they fill up. The third year, they're at ninety thousand. The fifth year, we come back and see what the state's paying them. If they're above the sixty-two hundred or round figure, then we pro-rate off of that. And we need to come up with a percentage that... If they go up a thousand dollars, we go up so much. If they go up two thousand dollars, you know, whatever the figure may be. So I don't know what the percentage... Where to go on that percentage is a question to you guys. That I... Maybe you can work out with them when you guys sit down, and you guys could do a little more thought about that. You know, the pro... When you guys receive the increase from the state. That's not an alternative. I mean, that may be something somewhere in the future that has to be looked at, you know. You know, it could be fair to all sides. So, you know, we don't see... I mean, I don't see that happening. When's the last time that, you know? How much? You know, how much? You know, we put a waiver... Excuse me? Right. So, you know, there's leeway in there to work. You know, those are the kind of things that I would like you guys to bring back, you know. An increase equals what? You know, you guys know more about that business than I do, and what an increase equals, you know, to your bottom line, I have no idea. So those are some things that I think we need some help on to go forward, you know, to be fair to everybody.
Okay, so just to deal with the councils. You're not comfortable with four dollars and sixteen cents a student, which is what they proposed?
I would rather, me speaking, not to jump in. I would rather see a base number. Boom, here's what it is.
Okay.
We pro-rate it for... As their capacity fills up, year three, if that's when they deem they're a hundred percent, then we go with that figure. And then year five, we revisit for the contract and with what we may be at, or negotiate back and forth as to what a good percentage of increase equals, and, you know, equals to the rent.
If I could, Mayor. What I was... I had somewhat similar thoughts in the sense of we need to... I would like to see a percentage tied per student. And what I mean tied it, would be in fairness, whether it increases or decreases so that... Now, that number's obviously something we're gonna work out, but that tying of the percentage, I wanted to be clear. That would be my suggestion. That we tie percentage per student, and so that it would be increasing decrease. And then again, we'll discuss the number exactly.
Next slide.
Okay. Mayor.
Yes.
My understanding of it is, is that if we're gonna be tying it to students, I think whether enrollment goes up or down and it fluctuates in our agreement, then what is... As a... Just logically speaking, if I rent an apartment for a hundred dollars a month, whether I'm there or not, or how many people stay in it, what is... I don't understand the mechanics, whether how many students they have in the building or how many students they don't have in the building. What does that... I don't understand how that matters. It's a piece of property that is owned, and why are we working out per child? We're not in the business of education in this respect. Why is it that it has to fluctuate with the enrollment? To me, that's not being fiscally responsible. It ought to be a set price, whatever it is, and every year or every three years, we revisit the amount based on the assessment or what the property is increasing by. I don't know. But I don't think we ought to tie ourselves to an enrollment factor. I mean, to me, that just does not make good business sense.
Mayor.
Yes.
In reference to that, I think that the reason why I would say that tying the percentage per child is because that is how we figure out the numbers. We say if it's, you know, seventy... I mean, six thousand five hundred per student, and the school board increases or decreases, or the state increases or decreases, that's what we tie it at. And so that's the reason why I'm stating tie per child, because that's how the income comes into the school. So that's basically the reason. Go ahead, John.
May I respond to that, Mayor? To maybe close the loop here?
In lieu of time, we need to...
Can I just... I just maybe to give it just so we can close this off. I mean, actually, I know this sounds politically correct, but I agree with everybody on this one. And so I would like to have the opportunity with the city attorney, whatever city staff, and Councilman Maldonado to negotiate a set amount that's roughly equal to what the estimated enrollment ramp-up will look like. It's pretty logical. What everybody can understand is gonna come into the school each year. And then if we have to have some way to make it higher if more kids show up, but there should be a cap at the bottom so you don't ever... I don't ever pay less than, right? And then tie it to a cost of living that's based on the state of Florida FTE funding. And if the funding goes up four percent, your rent goes up four percent. And let's bring it back and give you a chance up or down. That's all I'm asking.
Mayor, for a quick second. That's fine with me. Now, I'm at a good place because, you know, as a businessperson, you know, that just didn't make sense how it was proposed to us. And, you know, just like, I mean, Councilman Maldonado, you own a business, so you know exactly at some point.
It got a rent decreased.
Yeah, well, but I can work with that. That's perfectly fine, just as long as there's a bottom somewhere. We don't want to be like the housing market where there's no bottom. But there's a baseline or bottom to where we adjust. I'm fine.
And all due respect, can we just get through these few questions?
Well, I think maybe I can help a little bit.
Okay.
Okay. Did you say that Judy Waldman was authorized to discuss the nineteen ninety-three agreement with us? Is that what she said?
I don't know why, we're in the middle of a conversation.
The reason was, we don't want to be
About Judy Waldman.
Okay, we don't want to be the ones holding up a charter school, but at the same point in time, the nineteen ninety-three agreement is vital, and Exhibit Q is vital. So if it's possible, we would like to be in on the process of settling that, not the entire agreement, just the portion that pertains to this property.
Then if that's what they want to do, they need to deal with your firm and her firm. You guys get together
I told you, a third party involved in the negotiations disagree between the city
Not the negotiation.
What?
She wants the answers to the ninety-three agreement.
I told her I'll give it by the end of the week, but she's talking about Judy Waldman.
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry, because I thought I heard you say that.
No, we didn't.
That in sixty days, I was supposed to meet with somebody
No, no.
To discuss it. And the answers to the, the answers that you come up with may not be our answers.
I know, but that's what, that's what our opinion has been.
We're going to take our professional, legal professionals, and then use it, and we're going to move with it.
Okay, and so you would not consider hiring a third-party mediator to discuss them?
No.
Okay.
I mean, councils can consider whatever they want, but I wouldn't recommend it.
Okay. Can we just, okay, let's
Ownership of the building. We proposed, basically in our lease, that at the end of the lease term, that the building would, that the building would belong to the city. That's what our, that's what, they proposed that, at the expiration of the lease, the city would have the option of purchasing the building for eighty-five percent of the appraised value. They did not propose in their agreement back to us, what would happen if we did not, we did not want to purchase it. You know, again, I do have a recommendation, which is
Please.
That standard commercial practice here, and again, I don't know the economics of their transaction, but at the end of, at the end of the lease, certainly, the majority of the leases have the leasehold improvements, either belong to the owner of the real property, or the tenant is required to demolish what's there, and return the land to use. I thought that the proposal that Councilman Maldonado made, which was give the city the option of purchasing it, or asking for it to be demolished, was not, was not a bad
That was in reference to the stadium, not the standing building. And just to say something in reference to that, that we, that building is shared, in the sense of, we had the structure, they just filled it in, so I just want to interject that while you're discussing.
Anyway, that's what they proposed, that you have to, that you would have the option of buying it back. I don't know what they wanted us to do about it afterwards, if we didn't want to purchase it, so that wasn't clear, from what they gave us.
Mayor?
Yes?
My understanding, in our first phase, and I think this is, we're still discussing the first one, we're not, Phase Two's not built, so we're not talking about it, is this the ownership of the building that we're talking about?
The high school.
High school?
Yeah.
Phase Two, okay, so that's separate?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
I think Richard's giving us a typical, a typical scenario.
Yeah.
So with that, his typical scenario, I like Richard's typical scenario, and I would say, if anything, we give you the first right of refusal to lease it again. Simple as that. It reverse, reverts back the other way. Right or wrong, Richard? I mean, we give you the first right, since you did the due diligence, you spent the thirty-five years there, I think that people who take our place would say, okay, these people paid the price, they get the first right of refusal, at whatever the going price is for the lease price, that you're going to go back, and now, the building becomes ours, I mean, it's our property, right? I can support that.
If that makes any, Richard, I can support that, but if you want to do a consensus, as we go along these things, Richard.
Yeah.
And can I just say, and I mean this in all due respect, it's difficult to do this without having that city manager negotiating all these things in the back, and then bringing it forward, so I do respect this process, and the parents that sit here should understand, this is not easy for anyone on either side, so, I just need to say that, because it's, you got, and you can imagine, I'm negotiating six people. I think the idea would be that the school would be built in such a way, that at thirty-five years, it's got plenty of life left, based on the building codes today, building on the amount of maintenance that's in our budget to keep those schools up to date, the requirements of the state, that to keep them up, a lot of factors. So I think it's, the first thing that we should all assume is that the school, at thirty-five years, has real value, okay? Second thing is, is that that value was built by the charter school company that went out and borrowed that money at our risk, and we did it with no risk to the city. I think that's a fair statement. I think it's also fair to say that whatever this price is negotiated in the land, it's also a fair market value. Unlike Phase One, where we got it for a dollar a year, and, but we don't own the school, okay? And in this one, we're going to pay for whatever the fair market value of that land is, with whatever increases that are fair and marketable, you know, to the rate, and at the end of the thirty-five, now, we came up with thirty-five, just so, again, always on the table, that's the length of the debt service that we approximate from the bonds that we're going to float to purchase and build this school. So I think what we would want to do is make sure that the lease, if you don't purchase the school, has an option to continue, what you're saying, Mayor, and that that option should be at some fair market value, just like you had, and I think the formula you built covers it past thirty-five, just like it covered it up to thirty-five. So to me, you should build a formula that's fair for fifty years, or for five years. And if the formula is fair, and I pay what is a fair market value at the beginning, I'll be paying what it is at forty-five years or fifty years.
Mayor, it's getting better.
Yeah.
I would, I would have to just say quickly, and I know we made a purchase of a whole property for four million, not, a few years ago, and there was definitely a methodology that was different than that of normal, and I think because this is a school, there is a, it is a for-profit, that the methodology is different than just a regular purchase of a land or anything, so, in that sense, I would definitely want to call on an expert in reference to that, and I might have some ideas, and a company that helped us out with that, and so, so I really couldn't give an opinion that whether, whether this is right or wrong.
Well, let's look at that when you sit down and study it.
So, I just, so that we can move forward, that's why I say that.
I'm sorry, Mayor, Councilman Maldonado, could you say that again? You say you want to call in the expert for what now?
Okay. In this sense of what the ownership of the building, there's a different methodology in reference to the type of business it is, the school. So, like I said, I didn't disagree that not to have
An economist.
Someone come in to help out, and in this sense, to help out the city manager. That's what I said last time, and that's why I'm saying it right now again. So that, yes, our goal is that, for our interim city manager to find the help necessary in this.
I think they had also mentioned that maybe if you extend, the normal way to deal with this would be, if you wanted to extend the term of the lease, if there's some value that you're trying to get out of the, out of the building, you would extend the term of the lease, and at the end of that term, but this is what we need some guidance.
Okay, okay. They've said in thirty-five years, it's paid for. They've made their money as they went with their management fee. Everybody's made money, the city's made money, we've all made money, now the building's paid for in thirty-five years. And you're saying, because you did all that due diligence, you deserve a little more?
That's not what we're saying. What we're saying is that, is that the, at the end of thirty-five years, hopefully, the school's paid off, assuming it doesn't have to take on additional debt sometime in its life at the school, and at that point, the value proposition to the city is one of two things. It's either that you want to continue to have a high school there, and you take the option to purchase it at a discount, or you say, look, we don't want to buy the school, we don't want to put city funds at risk, we want you to continue the lease. And, you know, another way to look at it is, instead of having the option for us to continue, maybe you make it a requirement for us to continue, and then, then we have to lease it for another thirty-five years. Maybe that's another option.
Work that out, that's one way to go.
I, I just want this, this school needs to have an asset value beyond whatever the debt service is. That doesn't mean anything, that's just an arbitrary number, based on how much people will take bonds for how long. The life of the school is however how long it continues to be a vibrant school, well beyond all of us sitting here negotiating this. So I'm hoping that, that the city would never want to tear it down at thirty-five years, or doing those kind of things, that it would want to have, either to purchase, or, or just say, no, we're not going to put money in, keep running it, you keep maintaining the school, you keep putting money in to manage the school, and maintain the building, and
Paying us.
And paying you guys, and it continues to be a win-win.
Write a first refusal, it's now clear that, well, I think the council's clear, that they don't want to include the sports stadium in there, and is there some consensus that a right of first refusal's all right on the property that, other than the sports stadium? Is there some consensus on that?
To purchase?
No, yeah, yes. If we get an offer, then we give them a right of first refusal, but not including the sports complex, just on the dormitory parcels.
Just their footprint.
Just their footprint. Is there some consensus on that?
Quick question, reference to the, to the dormitory partial, are we striking that? Or is that included?
That's included in their, so somebody comes to us and says that I want to purchase these pieces of property for X dollars, we then give them, we give them the offer, we say, we received an offer, and they have to either accept, you know, accept and do the offer for that amount, or then we can go ahead and sell the property.
After thirty-five years.
Yeah, no, this is any time. If somebody comes to us tomorrow and wants to purchase all of this, they want a right of first refusal. But they'd have to meet the, they'd have to meet the financial terms of the offer we received.
The purpose of that is, that's almost another business deal, and that is because the adjacent property directly affects the school, whether, what type of use it is, whether it's a secondary institution, higher education institution, et cetera. I would think you would want us to have that, so that we have an option, this is your school too, and to make sure that, that the purpose of the educational facility is in line with the vision of the city. If we, if we can't meet the offer, we've lost nothing. But if we do meet the offer, we continue to drive a educational result for the city.
Wendy, what's your opinion on that?
Mayor, earlier in the meeting, I went through the seven items that the attorney's going through right now, and I gave my opinion on that. We've had lengthy discussion, and so I believe that I've given my input and my feedback. Now, there was a comment made that Councilman Maldonado will take the lead going forward, and also that the city manager has every right, under, even if his interim, to seek out a consultant, if he feels like it, if it's within the amount that he's allowed to. If it's above that, then he has to come back to council. So I, I thought that that's the direction we were going in, but now the attorney's come back and wants an opinion on the items that he himself said we would need a spokesperson for, so, other than the seven items I discussed, very, very precise, I gave very precise feedback as to how I feel over the seven items you're going over, and, I mean, I don't know what else to say, other than that's what happened.
I know where she is on this side. She said that she was okay, but no baseball stadium.
Just giving her a shot.
Okay, I just
Yeah. Just move right through it.
The construction period, we had basically, they had to start within thirty days after they got all their approvals, which would include building permits. They've deleted the thirty days, and basically said, we have to, we have to build it within twenty-four months of construction, and so you don't need for us to start within a certain period of time.
I'm okay with that.
You're okay? All right. The cross default provisions, I think that we've come to some agreement on, which is the, that it won't be used as security for, for debt on another property, so that, and then, we, they did, we had a provision in the lease that said, if they defaulted on the dormitory lease, it would end up being a default on this one, or if they defaulted on this one, it would end up being a default on the dormitory lease, and they had taken that out, but we think it's important, because you could have them default on the dormitory lease, and still, still have them across the street on the high school. I don't know what the rationale, what that was.
I'm sorry, Mayor, before he goes on, how are they going to default on a dollar a year? I mean, they've
They might not operate the school, they just could not, there's a lot of, it's not, it would not just, it would not be a monetary default, it would be that we're just not going to open up the school this year.
Okay, so I guess when you make that, then say, you know, when you, when you say default, you know?
There's monetary defaults and non-monetary defaults. In this case, you're right, there would be a non-monetary
Okay, that's what I was going to, trying to get at, because I think they already paid up, right, for the whole thirty-five years?
They paid in advance, but you know, we can still mess it up somehow. That's what you're, that's what your lawyer's talking about.
They paid thirty-five years.
That's right. Richard, the concern there was, the concern with the financing requirements, if we go out to public finance on a bond, we may not be able to have a cross collateralization or cross securitization with the dormitory, because it will not be part of the same bond offering. That was my, that's really the main concern. Okay, so we can discuss that. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I have what I need, and we'll, we'll move on.
Before we get there, I'll make a motion to continue past three hours. We're about to run out of time.
Yeah, I see that.
I'll make a motion to continue.
Okay. A motion to continue till nine o'clock?
Whatever we need.
How soon you make?
All in favor?
Bye.
All right, thank you. Okay, wrapping up the charter school, anything else you want to hear it say before you ...
We're done with our, I have like a full agenda after. I apologize, Mayor, but I did want to take an opportunity to thank the council, particularly the mayor, Councilman Lobos, we do appreciate the comments, and we know, we actually believe that some of what was said here tonight is very helpful for us to understand the feedback, even though this process is messy, we think in the long run, it will yield the best result for the city, and in all ways, both economically, of some of the concerns raised here, as well as the result of providing the educational value, so I want to thank you.
Thank you, and thank you again, parents, for coming out, and we'll get through this. Hang in here, we'll get through this. All right.
See you guys on Wednesday.
Couple minutes, everybody.
Thanks, John.
See ya. See ya. Where's Wayne at?
We're good.
All right. Yeah, okay, John, thank you. What? What? It's okay.
Yes, so
Can we do that? Huh? I don't know, he just walked out. I don't know. Man. Oh, Christ, he's still in, sitting with that thing.
He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out.
He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out. He's in the book, maybe they're going to get him out.[1689.66]
Yes, uh.
Can we do that? Huh? Item A, he just walked out. Item A. Yeah, man. Only person. Oh, Christ, he's still in, sitting with that thing. There she is. Madam Clerk, please return to your seat. We are ready to get out of here. Okay, we got twenty minutes. Okay, item A, A, discussion of federal and state legislative priorities, Councilman Williams. A, you got the floor.
Okay, Mayor, let me, let me, thank you so very much for your support. What I did was, on my work with Florida League of Cities, as my appointment for the taxation and finance policy, and then they appointed me to the legislative committee body that adopts all of the recommendations from the other legislative task force that they are. And then they just appointed me to date to the Federal Action Strike Team, which is, that handles the federal issues that may be related to all our, all our cities. So, with that, I brought back a preliminary report of our discussion for each one of you, that I think we need at some point maybe have a different workshop, just to talk about, just to talk about where we stand. One of them, which is very key to us, that Senator Haradopolis is really pushing, which is the revenue cap, which they call the TABR, which is Tax Payable Bill of Rights, and they're looking to cap our expenditures and income. And that hurts cities such as ours. What I've done is I outlined exactly everything that, how it would affect us, and so we're really not, we're really not, as a city, don't want to support this initiative, because it puts restriction on what we could spend, and if we have a disaster, you know, that are on these unfunded mandates, it really will take effect on us. The other one, that is a very good key, called the law enforcement assessment fee. This has been dialogue to try to undercut the cost of these huge public safety, like law enforcement. And what they're proposing is a, an assessment fee, and what it does is, it decrease the avalour amount on a person's tax roll, and it does a fee that will be identified for every commercial and real, and every piece of property, whether it's vacant or not. And it is to help underwrite the cost of our, of our law enforcement. The problem is, is that, as you know, law enforcement, our police department represents almost sixty-two percent of our general fund, and every year it goes up. And so we have to find some kind of way to, to balance that out, so our budget is not totally consumed by that. This is something similar to the fire fee that we have on our tax roll. So, you know, it would be interesting to dialogue about that. And the other is the infrastructure funding options. And what that deals with is, just like we have the CRA, and they use TIF funds to do that, well, on some of these infrastructures projects that we need to have done, they would use the same formula, they would use the formula to. Yeah.
Okay, I got like twenty of them.
Oh, yeah. And so, that will help underwrite the costs of some of our major infrastructure projects that we badly need in most of our cities. And so, at some point, we need to get with our lobbyists, so that once these measures are adopted by the Florida League of Cities, that we begin to go to Tallahassee and advocate on why, because with this revenue cap, it was proposed last year, and, but they're going to bring it back again, and it can really damage our city and the things that we're trying to do. So, Mayor, that's my little brief report. I think at some point, with your leadership and guidance, that we ought to maybe have a, a workshop just pertaining to these legislative issues that, that are going to be hitting our city, in the state legislature and in the federal.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Item C, September fourteenth, two thousand, ten minutes, ninety seconds.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item D, Robert Levy and Associates Government Office Agreement, that agreement, you want to get us, have the staff report. Motion to move forward first?
Move it.
Okay, thank you, okay. Staff report.
Mayor and Council, staff recommends approval of this resolution. It's basically extending the contract that we have with Levy and Associates. They're a lobbyist in the state of Florida, so we're recommending the expenditure is thirty thousand dollars, which is the same that they were charging us last year.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is County and Fay Governmental Affairs Agreement.
Move it.
Second, okay, the staff.
Mayor and Council, this is basically the same thing, but for the, on a federal level, these are lobbyists up in Washington called them Fay. We're recommending approval of extending their contract, is sixty thousand dollars plus auto parts expenses.
Okay.
Big budget for it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, Cordino, the Cordino Group Professional Service Agreement, motion? Motion? A motion? Obviously, we don't like the Cordino Group. Okay, dies for lack of motion. Let's move to G, so we can get out of this hot place. G is MT Cosley Incorporated Professional Service Agreements. You move on? We'll move on, simple as that. Okay, motion for the MT Cosley, as to this people who do our inspection process?
Motion.
And, thank you, second. Thank you. Discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, no, go ahead, Mr. Ray.
It's right, you first.
We're recommending approval of extension of this contract. They're the ones that, as Mayor stated, they're the ones that do the inspection and plans review for us. We have an expenditure of thirty, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars up to that limit, so, and it's as needed.
Oh, okay, so that's allotted for, and then as we, we draw down on the inspection process, we draw down the money?
Correct, yes, that's a, that's a.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
As a shortcut, can this, Mr. Ray, just tell me, because this is, I think, the third agreement that's come before us, the Cosley, what is the difference in the agreements? Is it that the time period has expired, or is it that it has changed in terms?
Basically, we're starting fiscal year, so they're extending the contract.
Okay, so we're extending the contract for one year, and so we won't see it again for a whole year?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Financial Enterprise Committee, discussion of account, approval legislation, travel. Councilman Williams, this is, needs to be brought to us, the manager has brought this forward to us, discussion of the travel, additional travel that Mr. Williams is going to need to do on the first board he's on, and now on the second board. And motion to move it forward, bring it to the table, discuss?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
Okay, let's, Mr. Manager, can you tell me approximately the dollar amount over and above his travel and training?
Well, we're trying, right now, we don't have a figure on how much above it's going to be.
The one time a year, same time a year.
You know, how many trips are going to be involved in the process? What we just need is a way to be able to allocate the funds required for this type of, for this type of expenditure. Each one of council members has a set.
Yeah, but what I'm trying to get at, which, so it's fair for the entire council here, is it one trip a year, twelve trips a year? Are they six hundred dollars apiece? Are they a thousand dollars apiece? You can't ask this council to vote on something, to approve for you for additional funds, and we're under such a tight restraint without telling us what the dollar amount is. If you tell me it's three trips, I'm a problem. If you tell me it's twelve trips, and it's going to be six thousand for one committee and six thousand for another committee, you're going to have a problem.
Can I bring some?
One second, one second, I just need some kind of guidance from you, and I kind of hoped you would bring that to the table today.
I did bring numbers here, because we don't know how many trips it's going to entail, but when we discuss it here, well, I can put together.
So far, what you signed off on, on one trip or two trips?
Well, what I signed off was, was just for this first, actually, it was actually at the end of last fiscal year. So, this fiscal year, we haven't signed anything so far. So, that's why I want to bring this up to make sure that we know what.
But this is going to come out of his travel and training, or will come out of your account, or a magical account?
Well, everybody has a certain amount already in the travel.
Mm-hmm. So, he'll exhaust his first?
Exactly, when that gets exhausted, we would need to know how to proceed with the additional funding.
How much did the last trip cost? I mean, that should give some kind of guidance.
I think it was around six hundred. Mr. Ross, get it also.
They meet quarterly, monthly, or?
I can tell you if you let me. I think we can go right to it. The, we met, we meet in September, we meet once, we meet once a month, up until November for the first committee that I am on. We usually meet at times of the, the location varies throughout the state. And so, the next meeting with this fellow, we had to take a trip to Washington. And these boards that I'm on, I did not, it was not foreseen to me, for me to be on these boards with this additional travel to represent the city. So, in this capacity, I think there's only between the next trip, which is in November that's coming up, and then as, on a federal tax force, we take a trip in February. So, and no more than three trips is from, from this fiscal year. So, February and November, as far as we can, that they have alluded to or told me about. And that's, that's where we are with that.
Okay, is that, is that the one committee, or, I mean?
I serve on, I serve on two, two committees, federal.
So, you'll be traveling to two different meetings?
Right, one, right, one trip, a year that they, that they serve in Tallahassee for the legislative, when the legislative session starts as a committee. And with that task force that I'm on, I will have to travel to Tallahassee. But they have not disclosed when those dates are, they only disclosed the two dates so far, November and February, and that has been all that I've found out. So, right now, we're looking at two trips, and if it's anything different, then, uh...
Let's, I mean, I'm just going to throw this out there, I say that we continue the travel under his travel and training, and then evaluate as we go, because as needed basis. This is a, you know, this, this is a tough year, and I want to make sure that if it's two trips, no problem. If it's twelve trips, you're looking at, you know, per side could be ten, twelve thousand dollars. Okay, so you'll keep us abreast on that.
I just want to say, I mean, and hearing, and hearing this now, I know it's important for these trips, but at the same time, then, if we go this route, just be mindful that if anyone else decides to get on the committees likewise, that we would have, you know, be afforded the same, the same right, I guess.
Privilege.
Or the privilege, and so that if, if we're going to, well, this MT said that, we're just going to watch it for now. Okay.
Well, what the biggest thing, I think.
I'm just saying, I'm just, I guess, my point is that if we're going to agree to this at some point, that we'll agree to it so that it's equal across the board.
I agree with you.
And that's all I'm saying right now.
I think, and if you want to add to it, feel free, but I, what I wanted to establish tonight, on record, is these funds will come out of his travel and training account that exists right now. Not a one-eight-hundred, not an eighteen-hundred account, not a XYZ account, under his travel and training. As additional funds are needed, you will fund his travel and training. There'll be no dipping into other funds, unless you bring it back to us and tell us. You tell us, you open, talk about transparency. Give us transparency and tell us where it's at. Do not sign off on, like it says on our agreement, do not hire new people, not fill positions, and do not fund without running it by us. I mean, we're the ones on the hot seat here, as we were told tonight, you know?
For the vote.
Okay, so with that said, travel and training goes through, and we'll do it and take it.
I just tell them thank you and congratulations for getting on those boards.
I tell you, it's certainly an honor and a privilege to serve on these committees, to bring back some workable knowledge to help us through these tougher times, that we're not the only one going through it. So, is it, let me just be clear, then, what, the motion is for what?
The motion is to continue your account, no different than anyone else's.
Right.
That it goes through travel and training, the money comes out of your travel and training account, as it depletes, whatever, you say it's only two, two trips.
Yeah.
So, that's. So, right now, we can fund two trips without going, you know, hurting the general public. After that, we need, it needs to come back to council, simple as that. We need to approve or disapprove the type of funds we're talking about, because if it is a meeting a month, and the average travel is six to seven hundred dollars, that's six or seven thousand dollars at the end of the year, that I think that we, as a council, need to all agree on.
Yeah, and I don't have any disagreement with that as to, too far as to say this, that on these committees, there are different things that we all go through throughout the year. And so, if we're all taking another legislative trip to Washington, that's already.
Yeah, on your.
No, no, that's already been in the budget for all of us, from the last budget, that our Washington trip will be taken care of, is that not right? So, that won't come out of our each individual. No, no, that's, no, I'm telling you, because this is what I've gone over.
You're telling me.
Yeah, no, I'm telling you what's fact. And the finance can correct me if I'm wrong. Sergio, you were at the, at the seat, so these trips, as far as our legislative trips to Washington, comes out of one account, and also our trip to Tallahassee, am I wrong?
Through, through the manager.
Manager.
I'm sorry, sir, well, what do you see your question?
What I'm saying is, he's made a statement that says that certain trips come out of certain accounts. What I'm saying is, and what I've seen in the budget, and Julio, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't that not in the budget? Yeah, well, I think, you know, I think it needs to be, you know, said, because I don't want to, you know, there's ambiguity.
Well, if you're travel and training, if you're going to Washington at the same time. No, I'm going to finish, if you're going to Washington at the same time.
I thought I had the floor, man.
Yeah, you do, but I'm going to, I'm going to interject with you. If you're going to Washington at the same time, at the same reason.
If you give me the floor.
Are you upset or something?
No, I'm asking you to.
Because we're not allowed you to spend ten thousand dollars.
No, no, it's not, man, you, you've interrupted me, I have the floor. You've given me the floor. Do I have, you've given me the floor, so I will.
You just completed that.
If you do not continue to interrupt me, the more you continue, the more I'm going to stop you.
Okay, go ahead, move forward.
Thank you so very much.
Let's hear it.
What I'm saying is, you've thrown out some ambiguity in what you're saying, and all I'm trying to get is a definitive, define, and what is already right for the whole council, and that is all. And so, what I'm asking is that, at the same time, our Washington legislative trip, we have a year, what account does that come out of? And our Tallahassee.
I think it's irrelevant, but go ahead.
Thank you, that's all. It is, it is very much relevant, because, you know.
Well, what I think, Mr. Manager, what he's saying here is that because we take a group travel with the manager we did, and it came out of an account other than ours...
But that was last year's budget.
No, yeah, but what is this year's budget?
It's different, you adopted it under different conditions.
I know that I took ten thousand dollars that the former mayor had in her account and gave it back, so that I'm almost on, I'm on an equal level with everybody else at this point. I know that it was budget prior to me coming in, my budget was travel and training was ten thousand dollars greater.
That is correct.
I got seven this year. I didn't use and I, and I asked for not to have any more travel training than any, than any of my council does.
Yeah, and in some cases, that the money that was allocated to each one individually was used by the previous council. And therefore, when you, when you came into your, you know, uh, your office, you, you had less money as anticipated.
Right.
What?
Because you came in at the...
I am a prior council. I think so.
No, no, I, I, in some cases, I'm not saying all cases. In, in the cases where the previous council had some travel, uh, scheduled, uh, by the time the new council came on board, uh, some of that money was depleted before. But it was handled differently completely. It was, now you, you are, you have it on the different accounts and, and, and you want to account it for in a different way. That's all I'm saying.
Now, there's specific line items for it, so, I mean, it'll, it'll be there and black and white.
Okay. Well, I, I just, I just, all I'm asking is that it, it stays within each one of our accounts. We, we don't go to our manager's account, we don't put it through some other account that goes to Steve Beadman's travel and training. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to speak to what I'm going to approve tonight, which is, I think I'm understanding what is happening. We are each given an account, we have an amount. Um, in the past, the administrative assistant has given me an estimate and the rest of council as to all the trips that are planned for the year that are available for council. And then I go through and by estimate cross things out if they are not within my budget. I mean, I planned for the whole year. I'm given seven thousand dollars and I say, well, if I want to go to Naleo, which is something that I'm a part of, I won't go to Washington DC. And that was the reason why I elected this year to not go because it wasn't in my budget to do that. Now, I appreciate the committees that Councilman Williams sits on. You're not paid to do this, it's volunteer basis, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So I sit on a couple of board meetings to, of, of boards that I represent the city and I like to do a good job because I'm there on behalf of the City of Homestead. So I appreciate him volunteering his time away from his new baby and his family and to, to take on the business of, of the state and to represent us. So in that spirit, I will agree to what we're saying here tonight, that he probably has travel planned already that has taken up his whole account.
Right.
And so what he's looking for tonight is above and beyond that amount, which we all budget, to take on these extra trips that he had not planned for prior to the budgeted fiscal year being voted on. I'm sure had he known that, he, we would have amended somehow or another, but at this point, I agree that per trip coming up, that we, he will bring it to us and that we'll be able to have input, say, go, you know, it's above your seven thousand, which you have already planned and go and, um, and take this trip and represent as well. So on that term, I will agree to it.
Well, fine, I, I disagree. Simple as that because I think that we have given, been given more than enough for our travel and training. Seven thousand, whatever, seven change, we've been given our share. I serve on the NPO board. I went to Tampa. I didn't ask this council for a dime. I didn't take any money from it. I drove there, drove back, did my own deal. I go there once a month. I never asked for anything on it. I, I want to represent the city. I want the city to do better and I'm happy he's on the board, so very happy. If this council chooses tonight to increase his travel and training, so be it, but I just want it to be on the record. I think it needs to be on the record for Julio, for our manager, and for this council. Simple as that. I, I personally think that we are already, we've done well with the taxpayers' money. Yes, sir.
Um, I would, um, like to, to make my point again, if we're going to increase for a council member that's on part of a committee, which, uh, whether appointed or, or joined it's become, um, that you would do the same for everyone else. So, um, if, if we're going to do it, then let it be known that if you do it for one, do it for all because that will give us the ability to, to do better for the city. Don't worry, it's a good thing what he's doing. Um, but if we're going to go in that direction, then increase it for all. Now, since our budget is tight, I would say let's stay where we're at now and just travel within our means. In other words, um, either take a Washington trip and not go to Naleo, which, and then make another trip to Washington, is which what I'm planning to do this year. I'm going to strike out, um, items that I felt in last year that I took that weren't as effective, that were good, but not as effective as, as to where I want to travel this year. Would like to go to Tallahassee more and definitely more to Washington to fight for, you know, basically shake the money tree over there and, and for our community. That's who I'm going to go for and that's what he's doing. But if we're going to, again, I'm going, my vote would to be staying within our means, but if this council, uh, I guess I could make an amendment or, uh, amendment to that where if we say yes, then it would be an increase across the board.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I'm just not really sure where we stand on any of the motion, but I have no idea what we've...
I know, but as far as what's even...
Yeah. I don't even know what we, we've come to terms with because as I understood it at first, it was we were going to leave it as is and he would expend it as he expends it and then if he finds out that he's running out, at that point, you guys would come back to us, the manager would come back to us and say, okay, he needs an additional thousand, fifteen hundred, two thousand, whatever it is for these last two, three, one trips. And we say, okay, give him the extra money. Is that, I mean, that's how I understood it.
Absolutely.
And then that, and, and then it got changed. I, I don't, it doesn't matter, I just need to know what I'm giving direction on.
Right.
Should I suggest that, that if somebody would put a motion on the floor, it might clarify the debate?
So I'll make a motion as stated and make motion as stated. Well, when I say stated, it's basically, um, I don't know if I should say as the mayor stated or as I stated. I mean, just within our means. I'll make the mo, so the motion is that we stay within our means now.
Okay, so you're, you don't really need a motion because you're not, you're not changing anything. You'll just want to leave it the way it is.
As it is.
So I don't think a motion is necessary for that. There needs to be, if somebody wants to move, to grant his request in some way, they need to make that motion.
And it doesn't just go to travel and my, and my feeling, it, it's any of us. It, it goes to whatever you want to buy, whether it's the decorative shirts we buy, whether it's the, the, the gavels we buy, whatever, we stick, we take it out of our own budget and then come back to us. It's easy to, I'll come back and ask you if, if I want something new.
I mean, I, Mr. Mayor, I, I understand in, in concept, I have no problem with the concept of it. I just, you know, I don't want to make a decision. Biggest problem I have tonight is I don't want to approve X amount of more dollars because I have no, you know, no one's told me how much that's going to be. I don't know how many trips, I don't know how much money. So I have a little, I'm a little leery to say, but in concept, I'm okay with it. In a concept, if he, if Councilman Williams comes back and says, I need X amount of dollars for X amount of trips, then I can ana, you know, look at it as an analysis and say, I'm okay with that. I, I encourage Councilman Williams to do the good works of the city like he's doing and I, and I will, I, I probably have no problem approving that, assuming we're not talking about a very large number. Very large number may be a different story. Um, so I'm just, I, I'm kind of grappling with what we're doing.
Make a motion.
No, it's kind of what he...
Well, as you said, we can leave it as this.
Either leave it as this or make the motion to approve it.
So then in the future, if I may, Mayor, will the items be coming to us per trip with amounts and then we would be voting on them per trip? Is that what we envision happening when he needs additional money?
After he exhausts his account. Once he exhausts his, his account, that we've all been given a brand new travel account. Well, once that has been exhausted, he or I or Steve or just any of us come back and say, look, I've exhausted my account. I'd really like to go to so and so. I'll give you an example. Councilman Maldonado exhausted his expenses. He wanted to go to League of Cities. I said, I have extra money. Please take it out of my account and give it to him. It, that could be done. That's, Mayor warned you that for me.
Mayor, that's a bad example. Councilman Maldonado just said we should all live within our limits.
Yeah, but he wanted to go and the same with him. He wants to go, but I don't think, I don't think we should tap into the tax payer's money.
Said I can't go for the handle money, so he stepped up.
Yeah, he stepped up.
So, yeah, I said I couldn't go for the record. I could not go and I'm not going to make the trip. And the mayor stepped up. I didn't ask at all. He just...
It's fancy, I didn't ask.
I think.
So I did everything I means.
Mr. Mayor, because I, I have no problem with the concept here at all. I just, without hard numbers, I really don't want to vote on anything officially one way or another.
There's no motion, anyone on the table, sir?
Okay.
Okay. So I can motion, there's no motion. We know where we're headed now.
Motion, continue this meeting's meeting.
Yes, amen. Okay. Um, let's see, the, uh, where are we at?
Nobody's seconded the motion. We're after nine o'clock that you made, sir.
Where are, we lost my trip, my, my, my place now. Uh, item B, twenty-ten, twenty-eleven CDBG entitlement program.
Move it.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Um, Mayor, I do have a question.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, please, go ahead.
I'm sorry, just...
B, item B, CDs, uh, two thousand-ten, two thousand-eleven CDBG entitlement grant.
Okay, no, this is not the one. I had a question on tab A, so I'll wait. Thank you.
Okay, um, sorry, I did, I did skip discussion, uh, I mean, uh, report.
Mayor, council, this is, um, again, an extension of a contract for Nancy Phillips and Associates. They're the ones that handle all our grants, uh, related issues with, uh, the CDBG, uh, anything from acquiring the funds to, uh, uh, payment through construction, et cetera. So we're, uh, recommending approval.
Okay, we got a motion with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item C, authorization, uh, financial institution. Uh, motion?
I'm over.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Stock report.
Mayor, council, what this, what this does is basically it standardizes, uh, the signatures required for, uh, money transfers, et cetera. Uh, before, we had certain banks that were listed on there and some of those banks don't even exist anymore. So basically, we cleaned it out and we made it more generic so that we could use it and it also lists who would sign for what.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item D, NSP housing rehab demo replacement project change orders. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Okay, discussion, go ahead, Manager.
Mayor, council, what we're, what we're, uh, looking for here is, uh, basically, um, we're kind of, we're being proactive in terms of, uh, change orders when it comes to these type of projects. These are the homes that we're acquiring and a lot of times when we acquire the homes, they have no water, no power. So the estimates to make the improvements are based on maybe not a complete picture. Once the power comes on or the water comes on, we may find some miscellaneous things that would add to the scope of work. What this does is allow us to go ahead and make, uh, an approval up to five thousand dollars without having to come to council. That way, uh, you know, we don't have to put the, the, the project on hold and we're putting a maximum of seventy thousand dollars, uh, just as a max. But again, it will be as needed in case we do run into these issues with these homes that we see unforeseen conditions, rather than stop the project and come to council. This will give us a, a chance to approve it at five thousand, up to five thousand only and, uh, and go from there.
Up to five thousand per house?
Yeah, that would be the, that would be the maximum.
Questions?
If it was above five thousand, we'd have to bring it to council, approve it.
Questions? Okay, no questions?
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
If the city manager can remind me, how much is the total amount we're spending per house?
Yeah, the houses that we're rehabbing vary. Um, I think the least one is like a thousand or two thousand dollars and the maximum, I think, well, the, obviously the demo replacements are the max and I think they're around a hundred and fifty thousand. But for rehab, I don't think we had anything over like thirty-five thousand.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, I, I think this is vague information and change orders are always a sensitive topic with council. How, when you say you don't want to hold up progress, I mean, how much more are you going to hold something up? Uh, I mean, knowing ahead of time that you are going to need these now that you've turned on the lights, as it says right here, turning on utilities is what causes some of these change orders, is what the description says here on the background. I mean, what, does something prevent you from coming and giving us individual change order amounts to the total?
That would, I mean, we could do that, but it could take a month before it gets to the council and gets approved. So we, we could lose a month in each one of those houses and how many houses do we have? How many?
Sixteen.
Sixteen homes, so it could, it, it would just, I think, create, uh, unnecessary backlog in terms of bringing in, you know, these miscellaneous items, which are very small amounts to begin with. I mean, uh, you know, I'm a professional engineer, I can look at the numbers and see if they're good or not, you know, certainly up to five thousand dollars.
Mayor, if I can continue.
So that's really the only purpose for it, so that we don't hold up the process and if every home comes in at a different time, every month we'll be, we might be bringing in, you know, a change for a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars. It's, it's really up to you.
I'm asking further information because of the vagueness of it, it leans me to not support it and so I'm asking more information to be able to understand the process of you going back and forth. Now, if the amount of rehab goes anywhere from a thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand, I mean, the five thousand really, I mean, how did you get to the five thousand?
We're, we're trying to, we, we made it five thousand because again, we wanted to make, we didn't want it to be major changes. I mean, if it's a major change, of course, we will bring it here. But what we're looking at is very miscellaneous improvements that will be needed. Let's say there's a water leak inside the house and we won't know that until the water is open. Those type of, those type of issues, which are not big ticket items, but they do require an approval process for us to, to get it done. I mean...
Well, then I just have one final comment then, if, after you're completed with all the change orders, if you can provide us a list of what you did and then I guess we'll go forwards from there. So at least there's some information coming back to us without holding up the progress.
That's fine, after the fact, we can recap and just do it as an information.
Question, Mayor? Question, Mayor?
Yes, please.
How much, how much do we get for our NSP dollars for this project as a whole?
Two point eight million.
Don't know, Mr. Jordan, but know that information?
Two, two point eight. Two point eight eight seven.
How many houses are we purchasing?
I'll be for George.
We have sixteen.
Now, we're purchasing the houses outright and then making the changes and fixing them up and putting them back out?
That's correct.
So, you don't foresee us doing it with the two point eight million dollars? I mean, I guess, if the money was already set aside, two point eight million for this project, who gave us, who told us two point eight was the right amount?
The federal government had.
The federal government.
That's why we're doing this. We have a certain guideline that we need to follow. So, if it goes above that, then we will need to get further approval.
So, I couldn't support this 'cause I would just like to stay at what was already set aside, what the federal government set aside for it. So, if there are, if there is, I guess, if it has to, then it would have to go before us. That would be my, how I would feel about this.
Okay. Mr. Mayor? Yes, please.
But this is just change, this is still coming out of the same two point eight, right? It's just being allocated for higher route.
What happens is, when we purchase a home, we're basing, you know, that home is a certain price. Now, let's say when we go in there to do the repairs, we realize that there's something that was not included in the original estimate.
But it's still, it's the same two point eight, it's just, you're adding more to the house.
I wasn't sure about, I thought this was an increase. So, that's why I said that. Okay.
Yeah, I understand what I said before.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Parking recs, committee, let's see, vice chairman Walman. Purchase, this equipment, purchase of TRO Sand Pro fifty forty.
I move to purchase.
Thank you. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
B, item B, proposal, architectural engineering services for Wickoc Park. Motion?
I move.
Second. Discussion, uh, Manager?
The Wickoc Park, this is in reference to design services for a bathroom that we're gonna install, we're gonna build there. This includes the design, furnishing expenses for that part of the body. It wasn't included in the original scope of the park. We realized that we wanted to add a bathroom on there, so this is the additional fee required to do that.
Okay, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Senator, before you adjourn, just three quick things.
There's one more in the back there.
I'm sorry.
You go ahead and read it, Richard, 'cause I stacked my stuff.
BJA, Community Defined Solutions to Violence Against Women Program.
I move it, second.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, just three announcements. Number one, I got caught by a mousetrap, so be careful where your feet are underneath the desk, 'cause my, I just got, I just got snapped by the mousetrap.
That was.
Second, is I'd like to request an executive session on the Shahada versus City of Homestead litigation. I forwarded you a bunch of documents the last couple of days. And third, just a note to the clerk, Sherry, those items, three A, four A and B and F and five A should not be carried forward to the council agenda. So, if you could do an addendum to take those items off, they should not be carried forward, so we don't have to deal with them.
Thank you, Richard. Uh, motion to adjourn, sorry, all in favor?
No.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You all wanna go home, do ya?